Let's go ahead and get started. I would like to call the order, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Wednesday, September tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Notice of option to recess into executive session pursuant to ARS thirty-eight dash four thirty-one oh-two. Notice is hereby given to members of the commission and to the general public that at this meeting, the commission may vote to go into executive session, which will be, which will not be open to the public for, and it would be for legal advice and discussion with the commission's attorneys on any item listed on this agenda. That again is pursuant to ARS thirty-eight dash four thirty-one dot oh-three A three. If we can have roll call.
Carol Mandino.
President.
Joshua Mair.
Present.
Christine Teague. CJ Lukey. Mary Norton.
President.
Ian Sharp.
Present.
Megan Weller.
Present.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for being here tonight. Before we get started, I just have a few housekeeping things to say about the audio system here. So you may have noticed we're not in the normal council chambers where the Planning and Zoning Commission usually meets. In this room, we have two microphones and a speaker to make sure that everyone can hear in the room. However, this room is mic'd in the ceiling for the online participants and the recording. So that means that if you're having a side conversation in the back, the mics may pick it up and include it for anyone listening online. So if you would like to have any side conversations, please head out to the lobby and come back in just so we make sure we have a good recording for this meeting and that the people online can participate fully and hear. And for the Planning and Zoning commissioners, you've already been doing this well, but just please pass the mic along and don't start your comment until you have the mic. And then for online attendees, if you're having trouble hearing a comment, please type an S in the chat for sound, and then we'll pause and staff will ask that the comment be repeated. That way we'll try to keep on top of any audio issues. And then also make sure if you are, so during public comment, we'll have the mic up at this podium. And if you're coming up to speak, make sure you hold it close enough to your mouth, not out really like this, so that everyone can hear your voice. Okay, that's it for audio.
Also, during the comment period, you'll have three minutes. You need to first state your name and your address for the record when you want to present. I will probably remind you of that. And then if we need you to repeat something, I will ask you to repeat it. Thank you. Right, first we go into public comment. At this time, any member of the public may address the commission on any subject within our jurisdiction that is not scheduled before the commission today. So due to public meeting laws, the commission cannot discuss or act on items presented during this public comment time of the agenda. To address the commission on an item that is on the agenda, please wait for me to call for public comment at the time the item is heard. Is there any public comment currently? It's not on the agenda tonight.
I don't think so. I don't have the syllabus, so I'm sorry. Sorry. No, it's not on here.
All right, if you look forward to the podium.
All right.
And again, give your name and address. And then you have three minutes.
Oh, my name is James.
The timer behind you.
Okay, I'm James Lumerick, one zero four two nine East Palomino Road. Eighty-six zero zero four. My concern is the amount of trash that is in this city. Think we need to do something before we make this town bigger, whatever we're gonna do. We really need to get some kind of trash pickup because, you know, I always thought this place was the gateway to the, to the canyon. Really, if you drive down the roads here, it's like gateway to the dump. So that's all I gotta say. I hope we can get something together that we can, and we can't blame the wind, we can't blame anything else, but we just need to start. And before anybody says, well, what are you doing about it? I do three miles on I forty every three months and pick up trash. And I pick up twenty-five to thirty bags of trash every three months. That's only three miles, so. I don't know where this is gonna go, but I just had to voice my opinion.
Over and out. Thank you. Does anybody else have any public comment or items that are not on the agenda tonight? And seeing none. We'll move into the approval of the minutes of our regular meeting on August twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Does anybody want to make a motion to approve the minutes? To approve the minutes from August twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. There's been a motion to approve the minutes from August twenty-seventh to two thousand and twenty-five, and I believe I'll have a second. Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The minutes are approved.
Aye.
Thank you, CJ. Now we'll go into the public hearing on Flagstaff Regional Land Use Plan twenty forty-five adoption. I have a presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Dino. I'm Sarah Decker. I'm the Congruensive and Neighborhood Planning Manager for the City of Flagstaff in the project lead for the Joint City and County Flagstaff Regional Plan. With me today on staff, we have several resources. The regional plan is a very broad document. It covers a lot of topics. The public commenter was correct. It does not cover trash pickup directly. But there are a lot of things that are covered by the document, so I want to thank all the staff who have participated. Only over seventy city and county staff and state and partner staff from federal employees have been reviewing the plan for the last two years, in addition to the twenty-person Citizen Advisory Committee, the Technical Advisory Group, and many others who, hundreds of others who came to public meetings and events throughout this process to provide input. We will be going over today quite a few things that are really pertinent to the hearing. So we won't be going over chapter by chapter what is in the plan. We're gonna go over the findings required for the hearing and the process that we will use to take a two-hundred-page document and basically do a very careful markup before sending it to council. Staff is here to help answer questions. So commissioners, if you have a question during presentation or during discussion time or after you hear some public comment, please let us know. All right, so let's see if my clicker advances properly. Voila, okay. So today, this is the plan for today. I have a thirty-minute presentation that covers mostly the legal findings and then a few reminders, having seen the eighteen or so public comments that have come in. What we might want to be mindful of as we're working through the material. After that is commission discussion. So if you have, you've received about eighteen written public comments that some of them were fairly lengthy. You know, four to ten pages of people really put time into and bought into the document. We'd like to identify any of those to kind of move forward, and I'll talk about how and why. We can have that during the initial discussion, and if you have any clarifying questions or areas you want to go over. Then you ask the chair to call public comment, which, as was demonstrated, will include a three-minute timer, unless you have a group of fifteen or more people, you are, or ten or more people you are representing. And then after the public comment, which may conclude today, or may not, if we do not have time, this is a two-part hearing, so we have to be leaving this room at seven-thirty P M. That is the end today because this building closes at eight. This is one of those tricky things. But the state law says we have to have these hearings in two separate locations. At City Hall on the twenty-fourth, we can stay open and keep working until you guys are ready to conclude the evening. But tonight, we have a hard stop at seven-thirty P M. to allow the aquaplex staff to close the building and go home on time. So I would ask the chair to please conclude, pause public comment, and continue it at seven-twenty P M. And we'll remind you that it's seven-twenty. That will give us ten minutes to close out any other discussion or call-up that we need as we prepare to continue the hearing. If you provide a public comment card and are not called tonight, you will be called at the hearing on the twenty-fourth at City Hall. Unlike tonight, there will not be a presentation on the twenty-fourth. So we will get right into the discussion and public comments. So we're treating these three and a half hours tonight and the four to six hours you may spend on the twenty-fourth as one event, even though it's happening in two locations. Are there any questions from the commission about that? That was important to cover upfront. All right. So. The Congress update to the general plan has unusual findings that you do not review on a regular basis. They may come from the Arizona Rice Statute nine dash four-six-one dot zero five, City Code Title eleven dash zero-one, City Code Title eleven dash zero-two, and in the broader ARS tied to general plans and zoning and annexations and other related land use and municipal planning decisions. The plan has also been reviewed for Title ten ARS material, which ties to the county. But that is not pertinent to this hearing. The county will have their own hearings on the legal findings of the, of the regional plan at a later time. So let's go over the first part of these legal findings. The first is procedural requirements. This ARS, the Arizona Rice Statutes requires effective, early, and continuous public participation. And Title eleven gives further detail on how it is expected to take place. The hearings and all previous meetings have met all required notifications. These hearings were advertised on August twenty-third in the Arizona Daily Sun and September ninth. And then we also have gone and done more than is what required. There have been region-wide book cards. Some of which are available over here on the table if someone did not receive one at their address. Water bill notices, social media, paid and free radio advertising, press releases, and in-person outreach tables for the last three years on this process, which has helped us create an effective and continuous outreach. We are in phase four, congratulations, of this four-phase process to update our plan completely. And this is the most formal phase of the process, so.
What?
Hello, I'm sorry, you're muted, whoever is speaking. Someone might have to mute them. Be muted. Thank you. Um, so all public input is going to be taken through the public hearings at this point. This is the start of it. There are not other meetings or other outreach that staff will be doing. We are encouraging everyone to come to the public hearings and be part of the three that are happening between now and August ninth. The process after this is that the city will call the ballot to put the plan in front of city voters. And the county then will also hold separate adoption hearings before the County Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Supervisors. The order of which are being determined now. So I said we've met all required notices. In addition, there are required notices directly to certain agencies and people in the community, and so I'm going to put those up quickly for you to see. That includes NACOG, the county, which of course is a part of this, not just noticing. Arizona Commerce Authority, the Arizona Department of Water Resources, Water Services Department helped us reach the right person to review the document in that organization as well. And then our usual list of interested parties, which is maintained by Nancy, our administrator, and Tiffany Antall, our zoning code administrator, also all receiving copies of the proposal and the notices to review. The citizen review session that we had on August twenty-seventh is another required step in this process. So on the twenty-seventh, we met the timing requirement of a citizen review session. But because this is an intergovernmental document, we did have a previous review session that included the Board of Supervisors, Planning and Zoning Commission, City Council, and the County Planning and Zoning. I'm just gonna remind the audience for a moment that the entire room is mic'd, and so the side conversations may be being picked up and heard online. So if you need to have a discussion, it's, you should feel free to pass notes like it's high school, but you can also step into the lobby to consider the conversations. But maybe I'm just old enough to have remembered passing notes in high school. I'm sure they did now. They like send things on their iPads to each other. So the citizen review session requirements have been met. The hearing and ratification requirements are underway. That means these two public hearings, one here and one September twenty-fourth at City Hall. Also, the City Council has elected to hold special meeting Thursday, October ninth at three P M. to conduct their public hearing. This will be the only item on that agenda. Like, much like tonight, they will not have regular business, they will not have consent, they will have their full time just to discuss this document. And then the ratification will happen as a special election scheduled within a hundred and twenty, more, at least a hundred and twenty days after October ninth, if that's the date it is adopted. Currently, that is believed to be May twenty-twenty-six. There are additional coordination requirements in the state statute, both with Coconial County, which has a partner in this, had plenty of coordination, but also with the Arizona State Land Department. It requires to be coordinated on any conceptual land use plans. There are no conceptual land use plans for state land within this region. There was one that was drafted in the late nineties that some people might remember, but it was actually never adopted by state hand. So as an alternative and to keep with the spirit of the statute, we have met quarterly and updated state hand and involved them in every part of the process. So now let's talk about what's called required elements. Required elements are basically the checklist of plan content that is in the state statute. And for cities the size of Flagstaff, it is a pretty lengthy list. It grows the barrier city is, but we are in the maximum list, so. I have about, there are about twenty of these, and I'm gonna try and go through them quickly. All of these are addressed in your staff report in detail with cross-references. So if I need to pause, let me know, but I'm gonna try and do these slides better fairly quickly. The statement of community goals and development policies is anchored in the priorities that we are setting for this plan, which have been identified as housing attainability and equity, climate action, blockable mixed-use neighborhoods, or blockable mixed-use community, maximum cultural resources, healthy economy, and resilient public services and facilities. The center of all of these things is their integration into the land use, circulation, and growth elements. The land use elements core is defining the general distribution and location and extent of land use categories, and that each category provide a wide variety of uses and housing types. In addition, there's a requirement for addressing inappropriate locations for infill and compact form, which are addressed in goals C D, P K, D P, and I. This is the future growth illustration, which is found in maps for, Policy Maps four dash one, four dash two. We are not making huge changes to the number of categories or what those categories are called. There are changes to what is defined in each category and also what is, what material findings there are for each one. So the categories are hard to mainly see in the map, but here they are in a list. So there's four kinds of building blocks developed in that, which were all based on scenario planning efforts that are described in Chapter Four. And then center and neighborhood are further defined as urban, suburban, and rural. The neighborhood building block also has a neighborhood commercial element, which is different than our current plan. It also describes districts, urban and suburban corridors, which are basically urban and suburban primarily commercial, long frontages, major roads, employment, university, and research. And then there are now two landscape categories. There's parks and open space, and then a second category that is new called federal lands and working landscapes. Federal lands and working landscapes are different than parks and open space. Or they have some of the elements, though, of recreation and outdoor open space in them, but they, they may have private land uses that are committed with existing entitlements. So that is important. It is not a category that allows no development. It's just a broad category that covers inholdings in the national forest, national forest system lands, that have a very different approach to how they are managed. So this circular element is another key central part of the plan. It has maps four dash three and four dash four, Policy Maps four dash three and four dash four. Cover natural and collector functional class roads and our transit, permanent transit network. The policies in the plan address parking, air, and freight, multimodal transportation. And then there is a requirement to address addressing, like how we assign addresses within the city. We already have as a city a very formal process for doing this, and we did not add anything in the plan. We simply described it because we are meeting the national standards for the E-nine-one-one process. So when that requirement was written, there was not necessarily a national standard. There is now. It's just a change. The growth element includes both the integration of the land use and transportation framework, so the circulation and land use elements, as well as promoting public and private construction of timely and financially sound infrastructure expansion. This covers all the policies that talk about how infrastructure and growth should be tied together. It also discusses significant natural resources. The term significant is one of the required words in the statute. Some people gave us comments and said we should get rid of the word significant, but that's actually from the statute. And so we have integrated that in several ways, both into Chapter Seven and Chapter Three. Open spaces is also addressed in Chapter Three and in the map three dash one. So I'll skip that open space element and show you this map. It's important to know that the open space map in the regional plan, not a map that might occur in an open space master plan or a parks and recreation plan, may not identify any land as open space without written property owner permission. So most of the land you see identified as open space is city and county land, owned property. What we have on this map, though, are bubbles that are hashed, hashed out, and they are basically areas where we have identified a need for large property acquisition, not small property acquisition. But we are not identifying any particular parcels because of the limitation of the state statute, which is written in detail in the plan. Environmental planning is covered both water, air, and natural resources, as well as the approach of resilience mitigation and repairness. All of these elements also incorporate ecosystem health and significant natural resources. The cause development element is written a little differently for Flagstaff because we are in a housing affordability emergency. And so we rewritten it so that it is focused on diversifying our financial strategies so that we can provide infrastructure and housing production in a manner that supports our housing attainability priority. Water elements and conservation elements provide for the required information. What is required for water is not the same as the water master plan. It is the use and location of known legally and physically available water supplies. That is, that is really the only requirement. But we have gone more in depth than that because the Water Services Department, and Lee Williams, our Water Services Director is here and can answer questions when we get to those details, has the Arizona Department of Water Resources Hundred Year Water Supply Designation that we established with the last original plan and are carrying forward. Conservation element has a lot of overlap with that growth element, and that was covered. In addition to the minimum, we also discussed dark skies. The recreation element of the plan also relies on map three dash one to meet the requirements. And the transportation framework in Chapter Four covers urban and regional trails, which are part of the recreation element and the bicycling element. Public services and facilities are mainly focused on public safety, emergency response, risk reduction, and hazard assessment. There are only over twenty existing operational and strategic plans for these topics in the region, and those are all integrated and pulled together in this document into the broader ideas that link them. The housing element is particularly important for Flagstaff. It includes existing and forecasted affordable housing needs through the community. We have four sources we use for those findings. We use the estimations based on the Office of Economic Opportunity data provided by the state, and we did run our forecasts by the demographers and verified them. The ten-year housing plan and the land availability, student study, code analysis project, which was run concurrently with regional plan, and then the regional plan scenario planning process. Down maybe the last four or five things. Okay. Conservation and rehabilitation and redevelopment is that urban landscape. This is a very interesting and potentially outdated for our community, but it requires that the city identify slums and areas of light, and we have not identified any in this plan. There are occasionally areas of city or individual properties that have issues. Those are dealt with not in the landscape scale, but by our code compliance process. The, there are also several policies that discuss contact development and the diversity of housing, which is a requirement under this element. Public buildings that are required to be identified by the statute are identified on map eleven dash one for public buildings. The safety element has a lot of pieces to it. And it's important to remember that this is safety from the perspective of land use patterns and land use planning, not safety from the point of view of how many fire trucks do we have? It's more, are we, are we building fire stations in the correct locations? Are we staging our resources and organizing them within our land use patterns correctly? So safety for natural and artificial hazards, several goals and policies, R S two, R S three, goal R, goal P S, which is for public safety. Evacuation routes are identified at the Coconial County level and not at the city level. They're even bigger than the regional level. And so Coconial County maintains a map of those, but there are policies that address how we want them to be constructed and where we want them, what purpose we want them to serve. There's also a requirement that I think is more detailed than people expect, which is that we must analyze if the water system can meet the peak water load supply within the city limits that is needed for fire flows. And that is the correct word, fire flows from the International Fire Code. Many people have said that should be water flows. It is not. Fire flow has a very specific definition. So page eleven dash one addresses that, as does policy W R one and the calculations of water adequacy described in Chapter Eight. There's some redundancy with circulation element in this element. It requires that there's minimum road width considerations. These are not directly identified in the plan. Map four dash three identifies the functional classifications of roads, collectors, and above. And the engineering design standards and specifications have road widths for each of those categories. So we did not repeat them because they could change over time, and they have changed in the last ten years because fire codes and best practices and NACTO guides, they change over time as science and research comes out about improving roadways. So we have left that alone to map four dash three. Geological hazards, this is another area of overlap with the growth element, are identified on the significant natural resources map. We identify mapped and known geological faults. Which do have a role in safety. We have found faults in our buildings. We have found areas where we've had to do seismic stabilization for buildings. That, that is an ongoing issue that we identify in the plan. Policy map four dash five, four dash seven, and four dash eight meet all Um, policy map four dash five, four dash seven, and four dash eight meet all the requirements of bicycling element. The energy element requires that we discuss energy efficiency of buildings and promote the production on renewable energy. And that is covered in policies C two, C three, and E one. The neighborhood preservation or revitalization element requires that we encourage homeownership and improvement of housing conditions, which is covered under the housing attainability and equity priority. And also that we discuss how we are creating a functional and attractive built environment, which is covered under both the guidelines in chapter four. We'll see our and the best practices for creating a sense of place. Those are the required findings. Any questions on those two procedural and then required elements? I want to talk about a few additional considerations before I conclude, um, for consideration in how we are implementing the plan. So this is a graphic that if you've been to any previous meeting, you've seen before. If you haven't, it's maybe new to you. Um, the regional plan has, is the basis for a lot of other planning that the city and the county do. But it does not replace or supersede those plans. So for instance, one of the comments we received this week was a comment that someone was concerned about the construction and the intersection near their home. That is covered in the capital improvement program and how the design work goes on in that. That is not a regional plan level issue. If I were to put that item and comment in the blue box, that's where I would see it. I would put it blue left essentially. So I think this graphic will be helpful as you, the commission are looking through comments. You read the comment, you may want to think, what part of this triangle, of this pyramid really is, does it belong in, does it belong in the blue left, blue right? Or is something that really does belong in the brown level, maroon level of the regional plan? Um, another example that we might see is people might bring up an area specific comment that is about their neighborhood or their community. The state requires that policies written in the regional plan be able to cover, or in the general plans of the city, really, be able to cover the entire city. So policies that maybe were just for green law. We need green law its own policies, someone might say. I'm not saying that, but I'm using it as an example. Um, and they need to say these things. They belong in a neighborhood plan. And they don't need the requirement of being applicable citywide that is required for all regional plan policies. There's some additional things to consider. The regional plan must define our major and minor amendment categories and provide a general sense of how different components of the plan may be used. So there's a lot of vagueness in state statute about what, what goes in your plan. It says you have to have major and minor plan amendments. You have to use your plan in specific kinds of findings. But then it doesn't tell you once you write your plan how to organize that. So a big part of our discussion tonight through this hearing process should be making sure we are satisfied with how this plan proposes to do that. Because this is a unique joint plan, there's often also some consideration that there may be some unique aspect, aspects of the process for the city and county on which the plan may be a little vague or silent because there is code that covers it. And Melissa Shaw from Coconino County is here if we have questions about any of the county only policies. So as you'll find, some policies, it's county only or city only, and then some that are kind of written so that it can apply. So let's be mindful of that when we are editing or looking at policies. And lastly, the city and county code needs to be updated separately to implement the new plan. We won't be doing joint code updates. So looking at the action items or anything in that area, also be aware that on the twenty fourth of September, the Planning and Zoning Commission for Coconino County is taking up their comprehensive plan, which has additional action items in their implementation strategy that do not appear in this document. Again, Melissa can answer questions about that if they come up. So I want to go over quickly the major plan amendment categories. These are different than the current plan. So again, I'd like to draw your attention to them as a commission. The current plan is, has a, kind of uses a boundary of the activity centers to determine whether proposals should, that propose an increase or decrease in intensity and density is appropriate or not. And whether it's a big deal, which is what I think of major plan amendments, or not a big deal. That is changed in this draft, um, in that the urban growth boundary is the difference. Now, in the urban growth boundary, the plan makes decreasing your intensity or density a major plan amendment because we want to ensure efficiency of different structure, which is part of what we talked about in the required elements. And then if you are outside the urban growth boundary, increasing your intensity and density, which is not all in the county, some areas in the city and areas in the county, would be what triggers a major plan amendment. Expanding the urban growth boundary, which is that same boundary we talked about for major and minor plan amendments, then also becomes a major amendment if it allows for you to increase, right? Because that's what ties category two and three are kind of, they're not quite duplications because there may be times where you trigger three, but not two, but they have a relationship to each other. Also, um, changing any area within the planning boundary to a corridor in a location that does not have access to an arterial or collector, because that's the definition of a corridor is that you're on an arterial or collector, would likewise trigger a major plan amendment. Decreasing areas of parks, open space, and federal lands and working landscapes and changing them to some other category would trigger a major plan amendment. And so would deleting any goal or policy. I wanted to talk quickly about the growth boundary. I believe we have some comments about it today. Um, the urban growth boundary, and Lee can answer questions about this as well, was established by the city in the early nineteen nineties as part of our water policies. And it was the area where we could serve water and sewer effectively. It was brought into the two thousand one regional plan and carried forward without any changes in this round to the actual lines, that blue line on the map that you're looking at. Is the urban growth boundary, that map has not changed since twenty fifteen. The red line is the city limit. So you will see that there are some areas within the urban growth boundary that are outside the city limits and some areas in the city limit that are outside the urban growth boundary. The other way we use the urban growth boundary is we think of it as the area within which the city would be willing to consider an annexation without a major plan amendment. So properties such as, um, the Pine Dell area, Dumpy Park, um, the Cheshire neighborhood that's north of the city boundary are not in the urban growth boundary. And if anyone wanted to propose, and it would have to be an individual property owner, the city would not propose this. Wanted to propose they are annexed to the city, they would have to do a major plan amendment for an annexation to be considered. So that is how this relates. So there's, sometimes people think of areas that are, that because we did a regional plan, anywhere in the region might be subject to annexation. That is not what our plan says. Our plan says that if you are in the urban growth boundary, you may request annexation. And that includes all the county islands and the area kind of around Quintana that is like a peninsula into the city. Any questions about that from the commission? The, the other thing to consider is that the state requires that for planned conformance and zoning amendments, that it shall conform with the land use element of the general plan and within the intensities and densities, and that it must be construed in a manner, or it has to be done in a manner that furthers implementation of and is not contrary to goals and policies and applicable elements of the plan. This is important because our current plan has this flipped a little bit. It uses the land use element to screen things and then it just looks at goals and policies when, when we've brought or zoning cases. But I wanted to have the state language because this is how the state intends us to use our plan. And so we're trying to get the requirements in the plan and how it applies to be closer to the state statute with the revisions we're making in the proposed plan. The way we are doing that is we are saying that chapter four, remember four, not three, um, has four things in it that every zoning map amendment will consider. The zoning categories and compatible zoning categories for each land use category. There are guidelines in that chapter that are written in a development mindset, like what, that they would be written in a way that class development and not more generally to other policymaking. Category guidelines, and then the transportation framework for roads and trails and byways and crosses. These are the things that you will get of, of confinement, of conformance for any zoning map amendment. If a regional plan amendment is required, which means you're not meeting those top four things for some reason, then we would in addition require the plan amendment cases, of which you see a couple every year, would have at least two plan priorities that are analogies and substantially further, remember substantially further in that language from the state statute. And also that none of the other ones that they didn't analyze could be considered contrary. So we're trying to get this language queued up a little tighter with state requirements. Um, the text amendments to the zoning code, um, could still use all the desired depths, fees, and goals and policies and other kinds of policy decisions, could still use the, the plan content in a more flexible way. But this would be specific for zoning map amendments. So here's my full target of how that works. Some people like to see the words, some people like to see the picture. Um, so the way, if someone proposes a zoning map amendment, the first screening would be, does it mean all these things in chapter four? So in that first blue, big blue diamond, put chapter four in your brain. Um, if the answer is no, that's when staff will start talking about is a major or minor plan amendment required. And then, then we would do a further analysis of goals and policies because part of the assumption is if you are not conforming with our land use element, which has been calibrated to our goals and policies, then you need to show a reason why that is a acceptable proposal or this, or why the commission and council should accept that proposal. So if you cannot make that finding, that's when staff would recommend denial. So we try and get people through a plan amendment first, and if we can't, then that's when you end up with denial. But if the answer to both of those boxes is yes, then you end up with a finding that's approval or approved of conditions. And that's how changing up this part of chapter two and how chapter three and four would be used going forward is important for your future decision making as a commission. Some other things to keep in mind, going back to beginning pyramid, is thinking about chapter three and four. Chapter four is really about that bright side of the triangle. It's about development review. Chapter three is about both sides of the triangle, the visioning side, where we might talk about things in budgeting or other policymaking, or when you're revising a master plan, service plan for the city. But also could be considered in text amendments, specific plans, annexations, and other kinds of decisions. Chapters five through eleven are fully about the left side of the triangle. They do provide some analysis and justification for why chapter four and three are written the way they are. But they would not directly, none of that language would be considered in a zoning map amendment or an annexation case. They're informational primarily in chapters five through eleven. So useful for staff, useful for people to pick up the plan in the future and think, what did they need? Or why did they set this policy? But nothing in chapter five or eleven set policy. We need to provide information so people can understand policies. All right. That is all content. We linked a couple about how we are going to help you as a commission successfully made through the hundred and thirty individual action items that have been suggested in the eighteen comments you received so far. And any other things that come in for goal public comment and any other things that you want to bring up here as part of the meetings. The first thing we have is staff's already started preparing a, an errata. Errata is only for grammar, spelling, and non substantive corrections. So we will not put anything on the errata that is substantive. A good example is the word appropriate, the I and A were flipped in a place. Or, you know, a comma is missing from this list in this sentence. They're very, very simple changes. You have been provided one as part of your packet. But Elsa and Lauren over here at the table from my staff, our senior planner and our associate planner, have a live agenda that they can edit as we are discussing things and they can pull it up and look at it at the end to make sure it's complete. Another thing we are building in the background and we'll pull up on the screen as we need to, is a document called a holding space. So your holding space is where you've read these comments and you can say, I would like to have further discussion and consider for a future condition of approval. Comments by terms such and such letter and this kind of thing. And Elsa and Lauren will fill that in the background and then we can pull it up and go through it systematically, either by page number or topic, or however you like it sorted. And lastly, we, we are going to ask you to finalize this list at the next hearing, so not tonight. And then adopt it through your motion as a condition. Staff will then, if we can do that by the twenty fourth. If we don't have to go an extra meeting, then staff will try and prepare a version that is the original version that you saw at the beginning of this process and an updated version with your changes or cancel. That is due to cancel by October first. So I would have less than a week to prepare that. So if there's too many changes or if, um, we have to continue on October second, then I won't be, we won't be able to prepare that additional material. So your staff recommended motion in your packet is a little different than the one on this slide, and I will update the packet before the next meeting. But it is that staff recommends planning zoning for the request the city council for adoption of plan and submit a proposed update to voters for ratification. We recommend the following conditions that you updated, updated the plan for the attached errata, which will be the final errata that you look at on the twenty fourth and give us the thumbs up on. And then make changes to the plan as listed in the conditions of approval document prepared and reviewed during the hearing. So that holding space will start to become your conditions of approval. And staff will be over there typing and editing. And then you will be able to say yes, no, yes, no, yes, no down the list. If anyone who is here tonight, um, I know everyone is up here and we have two hundred and ten pages of content that you might be interested in talking about, and you only have three minutes. That's not the only way you can just get, we are continuing to get online written comments. So if you have a great book report in your heart and spirit, I don't know which ones of you do, but yeah, someone has a great book report in their heart and spirit, wants to read it, wants to provide for detailed comments, they can't, they can. You can scan this QR code or you can email regionalplanfortyfivecomments@flagstepeasy.gov. It is also on the postcard that Lauren has over there on the table if you're here in person. Um, and that will give us, we will continue to get those comments through the twenty fourth. We actually will continue to get them all the way till October ninth. And I will keep packaging them and attaching them and making sure everyone's getting them as we move forward. Any questions for me before the discussion?
If you get those comments after the twenty fourth and we're not having another meeting before council meeting, then those comments would go to council and considerations?
Correct. But you would still, as members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, be copied on them so you could see if there are new comments coming in after your recommendation. Your recommendation of approval, uh, your approval and associated conditions would stand. And then any newer costs or comments would be considered after council. We would build like a similar table for council to work through at that time.
Thank you.
We got a letter today from the Open Space Commission. Is that considered public comment as well?
Yes, if you got a letter today, I was not able to upload it to a packet or anything like that because we, everything has to be finalized twenty four hours in advance of the meeting. But I will bring that forward for the twenty fourth. So there will be cutoff date there too, where I have to send you guys a packet the week before. And so we'll, we'll keep bringing them forward as quickly as we can. And you should all be copied on them. If someone sent one, though, maybe during this meeting, you might not look at it till tomorrow, or maybe you would.
First question is, um, this presentation, would you be able to post it so that we have it to refer to as we're continuing to study this between now and the next month?
Yes, it will be part of your minutes. It will also be, it can also, or can be attached to your minutes, but I can also attach it to the packet for the next meeting. That would be helpful.
And then I just wanted to tack on to what Commissioner Sharp asked about. Um, you know, we, we got two letters almost from, from the likes of Future and Open Space that didn't make it into, you know, the summary of comments. So when comments like that come in or are we, we need to wait till they become part of public record? Or can they be discussed? If we get to the point of discussion today, can they be discussed? Or because the greater public hasn't seen them yet, is that a problem?
They can be discussed because they will be published again and made available as part of the minutes of packet.
And even, you know, I know some of us replied as public citizens, you know, and we, we were instructed to put our errata And even, you know, I know some of us replied as public citizens, you know, and we, we were instructed to put our errata comments and, you know, our general comments. So like little things like errata things that we caught, those weren't on your errata list. Did they just not make it or maybe?
That errata list was finalized. Almost a month ago.
Okay.
So I can't, I couldn't add things to it yet. You, you need to discuss them tonight. So anything, even if a commissioner sent it in. And really, commissioners should not be using the distribution email. As stated in the last meeting, you should be sending them to Alex tonight. We will make sure they are, they are ready to go when you bring them up. Um, but we want to make sure all that's easier and that there's not an accidental reply to those. Um, so the, the question of, you know, are, if you commented like right now, then we would probably not pull it up right this second, but if you commented earlier today, um, Elsa has already kind of got those at the up on the screen if someone wants to discuss them. And she's kind of drafted how maybe we would want to move them over um, in a spreadsheet for the holding space. So we, we are prepared with anything that was received before about two thirty today.
So then I just wanted to clarify. So the Lawrence chair had three hundred and eighty-three comments. That those were comments based on the previous version of the regional plan before the rewrite.
Correct. There were two thousand public comments received during the sixty day public review. And yeah, a very long spreadsheet he gave you was every single one of those comments and how we addressed it.
Okay, so those are not things that we are necessarily discussing. We're discussing what the recent comments are on the latest version, which were those basically two files of comments.
If you have a question about how something transitioned from the sixty day public drafts to this draft, then that's, that is part of something you can discuss tonight.
No, that was, I just wanted to make sure that we were only looking what we needed to look at.
Yeah, there was one commission, this, the Commission for Inclusion and Adaptive Living, which provided a comment letter in December. It asked you to please consider their comment letter and anything that's not that been incorporated as part of your discussion type. I mean, I forwarded that request from their chair to you.
So would we be the ones responsible to have to cross reference what did get addressed in the rewrite versus what's remaining?
Yes.
And there was another, I think, comment, maybe by a private citizen that also summarized some of that. I guess that's something that we would have to sort of sift through.
Yes, staff can help. We have an Excel version of that long PDF table. I'm sorry, I can't upload Excel into your Agenda Quick platform. Um, but we can store it and we can look for things for you. Um, that's why we have two ready enabled planners to like be fast lookups to help your conversation stay on track.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I had a question.
All right. You'll, is that CJ?
Thank you.
It is.
Okay, CJ.
Um, I just had a question about um, the traffic coming in from Fort Valley since you were talking about the urban growth boundary and how to increase, that hadn't been increased since two thousand sixteen was my understanding. And that if people wanted to have the services, they would have to request to be annexed. But what about the traffic coming through from those areas outside? Is that considered anywhere?
Thank you, Council, I'm sorry, thank you, Commissioner Lukey. Um, the one eighty corridor study was completed in twenty twenty by the Arizona Department of Transportation. US one eighty is an Arizona Department of Transportation route. Um, there's not additional consideration in the regional plan because there is a definitive build out. That plan also considered alternative routes and for the third time, in, in addition to the, I think, we said we spent five hundred thousand dollars studying alternative routes to one eighty in the last twenty years. And all of them have said there is no financially feasible alternative route to one eighty, which was a finding that was made and included in the US one eighty corridor study. That is an Arizona Department of Transportation document. So it is really outside the scope of the plan other than how the built environment around that road may interact with it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir. Thank you. You, is the present? Are you done with your?
Yes, the presentation is concluded. Though, um, I think step two was um, discussion for all of you and, and one of the things you can discuss is if some of these written comments that you saw, you want to put them in the holding space. Um, Elsa, how many were, Elsa went through all of the comments over the last few days, our associate planner. And then she pulled out all of the actual action items, like things people said, you should change this, the plan should talk about this. How many are there for consideration? You can just tell me, I'll repeat it.
Thirty or so.
Yeah, there are about a hundred and thirty from those eighteen comments. So rather than copy all of them over, I think it is up to all of you if you want to lag some of them to be pulled forward in advance of the rest of your conversation.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you for your great presentation again. Uh, so we are open to discussion from commissioners. And I don't know how we want to start to go about that, but if anybody has initial discussion.
Yeah, I think I was quite ready per, prepared, prepared for this. I thought we were going to do public comment first. Um, and then move things to holding space, but if you want us to start with the written comments. Um, yeah, I still don't feel a hundred percent prepared to discuss the nitty gritty details of each, but there's certainly ones that came through that I would like to see elevated to holding space.
I, I agree with that, Councilmember Norton. I would encourage you just to identify, these are the ones I want in the holding space and not have a long discussion of them until after you hear a public comment. But it would help um, us prepare the spreadsheet and make sure we know, we can organize it so it's ready for you when public comments concluded.
Okay. Um, what I need to just, off the top of my head when I recall, um, I would like to see Friends of Flagstaff's futures letter put into the holding space. I would like to see the letter from Open Space Commission put in the holding space. I would like to see the comment from Ian Sharp as a citizen put in the holding space. Um, I do want to talk about adaptive living in the vicinity. I just don't know how to tackle that yet, but I do think that's worth a discussion at a higher level. Um, so I'm going to ask for my own as a private citizen. I would like to, I would like to have my comments uh, put in. Um, those are the ones I can think off the top of my head right now. I may have others that, that I do a little further review or based on public comment.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
I think that's good for now.
Okay.
So we're not going to go into a full discussion of that, but we're going to put those in the holding space at this time. So that was S three, Ian and Mary Norton, Open Spaces letter and Adaptive Living letter. Is that the five that I wrote down?
Can I ask for clarification?
Sure.
Commissioner Norton, do you just want accessibility and inclusion as a broad topic in the holding space for now or do you want any?
I think there were two or three.
Right. It adds up to a big portion of the list, so.
So I don't really, I'd have to look, I'd have to read them again to know what the word that.
Let's, let's just start by putting something broad in the holding space so that we can have detail when you're ready.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
Well, I have a whole lot of questions to ask and I don't know if it's best to let the audience go ahead and after say, because they're here or all the, or should I ask the questions now or should I ask them?
What I put on the slide previously was any clarifying questions. So if you, if you want to ask some questions now because you think it'd be beneficial for everyone to hear before the public comment starts, um, that would be fine.
But I'll have opportunity later to ask questions as well.
Yes.
Okay. I'll hold my breath for now.
Anyone else have any comments or question?
Commissioner.
Okay, yes, because I just wanted to get back to teams. Um, all right, then I think we're open to public comments. And I want to remind everybody a couple of things that we started off with was that if you're having side discussions, for those of you who came late, the audio was picking up everything. So you probably want to go out in the lobby area for side discussions because you may be picked up on something may pick you up on a side discussion. So I'm just reminding you of that. I'm also reminding you, when you do come to the podium and you should have, if you want to make a comment, you should fill out a card to make out a comment. But when you come to the podium, if you could please give your name and address for the record. And then you have three minutes to speak. Um, if you have questions, um, because people are taking tedious notes and our note takers may need you to slow down, we'll give you that extra little bit of time for the note takers to catch up with you. All right. So, um, first we have sought best. If you please come to the podium again, give your name and address.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, sought best three nine two five one paradise. Get out here. Housing and density are the big issues in this document. As you know, why do people come here? Want a house? Because of the environment. It's the most unsustainable. The environment is the landforms, the animals, the plants on the landforms. If we have a question about animals, we make a single phone call. Arizona Game and Fish, they've got generations of data research. They keep their data, many professionals. Bringing it all together and you all see the wildlife, the waters and we've been around a while, so you know how good they are. In rural plants, we don't have anything close to that. Um, the concept of invasive weeds is well representative here. We've got a problem. So far it is not overwhelming. It is kind of a nuisance level. If we let it go to landscape scale, it is overwhelming and we have no answer for it. And it can change everything. Um, on the other side, we have the plants that we want. And as we increase density, um, we're going to look more like a city and uh, I just heard a strong town um, presentation through uh, from the plans of the future. And one of the things, it was a great presentation, but yeah, we need density. Uh, more for our Thompson and the rest of this part of the ocean. Every slide was ugly. I mean, people want to get out of town and live in the suburbs because it's green and beautiful. And how do we make things green and beautiful through plants? We need somebody strongly representing the positive side of plants and coordinating with the negative side of plants. Uh, the negative side of, of plants, the, the best way to defeat invasive species is a healthy system of native plants. That's how it works. When we blade something and remove the native plants, we get the bad guys. What I propose to both attorney and city, and I'm a commissioner, um, county, is a single position that would represent plants, a joint position, uh, whose comments? I've got twenty one seconds. Okay. So to support that, I would like to broaden these a couple of things here to and stick good plants in with the bad plants. And this is not a big change. R S seven, uh, prevent inventory, treat and remove invasive plant species and preserve native plant communities, uh, uh, uh. So I'm sticking good guys and bad guys together. You know, the thing is, this is on the bad guys. The good guys are part of the collection. And on uh, page, so that's on page, you got it? Three fourteen? On page seven twelve.
So you've gone overtime. So thank you.
One more for thinking. On page seven twelve.
Yeah, I'm going to ask you to write this in.
Oh, I will definitely do that.
Okay, so I'll be with the hand, but I'm working on it relatively at the same time, so. I, I understand, but we have three minutes, so I need to let the next person.
All right, I, I will send these in to you then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person uh, to speak is Sean Golliger. I hope I pronounced that right.
Hold on a minute.
And again, you have, um, he's speaking on a, as on behalf of a group of ten or more, does that give him five minutes?
Don't worry about it. I can still do it at three.
Okay.
If you'll. I'll keep it short and sweet.
State your name and address.
Golliver, Sean D., eight one three West Coy Drive, eight six zero zero five. And basically what I'm concerned with mostly is with the housing and regulations for infrastructure. It would be, and it's still following the carbon neutrality plan, which has now been funded. And I, I've already sent in multiple articles as well as a, as four page thing with alternatives on the energy and water policy plans. They actually have different policies where like say, for example, if you start instead of having recycled water, you can start looking at primary water. Also for energy, instead of using renewables, we got a better renewable right here called volcanic energy. There's a volcano right here in the lava field. You can also start going back to actually natural gas instead of total electricity since our power grid will not work for that extra load. Unless you decide to build more nuclear power plants around here or bring back, say, maybe the old coal fire generator plants and convert it to natural gas, which is a lot cleaner. Furthermore, uh, some of the other renewables that we do have be also for maybe if you look at doing reclamation, because most of the materials that are made out of this stuff are highly toxic and you cannot just bury it and hope that it's not going to leak into our water supply or into our food supply. And okay, what was the other part? Oh, yes. Accessibility part, I found kind of odd when she mentioned it, so many of them have inclusivity. That has some negative connotations and political environment and I think that might actually uh, have some issues legally later on down the road. Further, uh, I basically just say that we need to go with a lot of this carbon neutrality part, we need to scrap it and just go back to the drawing board. I'd be willing to actually uh, bring in more suggestions and everything like I already have. If you have any other questions, I'm easily. Thank you.
Thank you.
And it's also, it's not, it's flagstaff, it's flagstaff first, they're moving it down. I'm sorry.
Okay. Next, we'll ask, um, Michael William Martin. Come forward. And again, state your name and address for the record, please.
William Martin. As the postcard said, a lowers line, you know, is optional. I live in the area. My zip code is eight six one, oh, eight six zero zero three.
Did you give your address?
Give your post office box, will I do for you?
Usually we need a physical address so that we know you're in the city.
That's optional on the form. I'm taking you at word.
I'm asking you, it's optional on the form where it's.
Then change your form.
So I'm asking you to give it when you speak, so that's fine. Go ahead.
Okay, I can go ahead.
Yes, please go ahead. It's, it's optional. You're.
Thank you. I, a related issue. The, the city seems to be wanting to make itself bigger and I notice you have a host of, uh, county islands in the middle of it. What's the logic of those county islands? And what is the criteria of the county islands? So that's a question I'm putting to you. Seems to me kind of silly that you have, but that's out of being, so I'd like you to fill me in on that, if you can. Thank you.
Would you like staff to answer the question of why there are county islands?
Yes.
Yeah.
So there are listed as not an issue annexation cases against property owner wishes. So property owners who have, who live within county islands have just not requested to be annexed. As long as a county island is within the urban growth boundary, it is eligible for consideration with annexation. Though that is sometimes more detailed than that general description, like is the infrastructure something the city is going to take over, or is a homeowners association going to manage it? Those sort of things are, or maybe even a district that might be created to support an annexation. Those are questions that are worked out on a case-by-case basis, but those county islands exist for a number of reasons, some of them simply being property owner preference to be in the county versus the city.
Thank you, Sarah. Do any commissioners have any questions about that? All right, we will move on to Diane M. Martin. Diane, please state your name and address for the record.
Diane Martin, 2531 Ford Trail. I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I got some information secondhand, which I'm concerned about. That you're planning to consider annexation of Timberline, Fernwood, and Donie Park for future annexation. And what, if that's correct, what impact will have on our property taxes? And now we have limited sizes, like one acre and two and a half acres on the properties. Will that affect the change of the size of properties being built out there?
Again, Sarah, I'll reflect to you.
Lauren, could you pull up the presentation in the urban growth boundary slide again?
Just give us a moment. I think the visual aid will help.
So it is incorrect. This, the information discussed was not generated by the city. It was someone else who missed on, who had not read this part of the plan. But anywhere that is outside the blue line is not eligible for the city to consider for annexation without a major plan amendment. So that means that there is almost an additional six months to a year of process that it would take to do that. It can be requested. It is not in the city's plans. The plan does not support that. That's what the amendment process does. It's basically if someone says my application requires a plan amendment, it means that it was not overseen land use or infrastructure change at the time the plan was adopted. So no, there is no plans, and the plan does not support annexing Timberline, Fernwood, or Donie Park. Those are all outside the urban growth.
And just the state for the record and other county areas that you would, that are outside that urban growth or the urban growth boundary would be?
Pindell is outside the urban growth boundary to the south, as is Mountain Air and Patina, which are not contiguous to the city. The neighbor, part of the Cheshire neighborhood and, and Forest Valley are both outside, as well as the Mont and some of the areas on the.
And some of the western 60s. And some other areas on the I-80, on 180 borders.
Yes, 180 plus the city limits is not considered for annexation.
Okay.
Mostly not, not supported by the plan.
So those areas are not supported by the plan to be annexed into the city. There is no plan for that. And so those people living in those neighborhoods that you just mentioned, Fernwood, Donie Park.
Wildcat, Lock and Ranch, all of those.
All those areas are not being considered to be annexed as part of this plan. If the citizens there wanted to be annexed, it would be something that they would have to bring forward, and it would be a major plan amendment.
That is correct.
All right, Russell Randall. Again, if you'll state your name and address.
Thank you, Sarah. Hi, I'm Russell Randall. I live at 1199 West Coy here in Flagstaff. I'm Chair Commissioners. Today, I represent Barrier Free Flagstaff. Barrier Free Flagstaff is a disability advocacy group, maybe about 20 members that cut across the ability and disability field. I also represent the Community Practice Transition Team. It's about 35 members, largely all members who are professionals in the field of disabilities.
People can't read. Sorry. Sir.
As I present today, I would first like to congratulate Sarah on her team for really including a lot more things with regards to accessibility, inclusion, and universal design in this plan. And we're thrilled to see those things included. We're also very excited to see things like sense of place, and considering how sense of place can be made available for folks with disabilities, very important issue with the disability community. And, and really a lot of discussion about universal design as well. I've sent in a lot of comments. I submitted a lot of comments. But we do have some suggestions for improvement. We would like to see more mentions of accessibility, inclusion, and universal design in the action part of the plan. It's easy to kind of talk about doing a sense of place, but we would like to see more actions taken to ensure that that sense of place actually could occur. As I discussed last time, we have about 25 maps which are not accessible to folks with colorblindness. Perhaps that could be rectified. We have a concern there's no discussion, really no discussion at all of accessibility or inclusivity in Chapter 5, Social and Economic Systems. Specifically with housing, we would like to see some more discussion about the availability of ADA-compliant housing. Housing that includes accommodated mobility challenges. We're thrilled the glossary is much improved, a lot of discussion about disability-related terms in the glossary. We would like to see a few more, perhaps. And we have a concern there's no discussion of increasing accessibility, increasing ADA compliance, and portions of the Flagstaff Urban Trail System. Remember that folks with mobility challenges also like to get out in nature. They also like to use Flagstaff Urban Trail. And that's kind of a complicated thing. Martin, Ince and I have talked about that a lot. We've actually walked those trails together about where the trails could be made more accessible. So we would like to see more mention of that, especially in the action part of the plan. And then there's no discussion whatsoever with regards to therapeutic recreation and actually providing recreation, that is therapeutic and accommodating for folks with disabilities. But again, in summary, we congratulate Sarah on her team for really including a lot of these things. We'd love to see a bit more.
I'd like to call up James Keen. Again, if you'll state your name and address for the record.
I'm Chair, many commissioners.
So you need to speak louder and write to the mic.
Is this better? Thank you. James Keen, 12034 North Copeland Lane, Flagstaff 8004, 86004. My understanding coming to the meeting time was that there would be consideration of annexing Donie Park, Timberline, and those areas. That clearly isn't the case. However, I would like to make one suggestion for the future. In looking at the plan, I've looked over some of the plan, read through part of it. But also, the last two or three years have been reading various things on the internet. We had had property in Fort Valley since about 1976, and it didn't quite grow up the way we liked it. The monkey corridor is, as we earlier mentioned, that is very, very busy. So we sold that property in '22 and bought this Timberline property. In looking at this, in, in having engaged in building and so forth, the one thing I see is sort of missing is maybe more practical implementation of policies. For just to give you an example, the Cookinale County does not have an engineer in the building department, so you have to go outside of that, get engineering and stamp drawings. I'm wondering how this might, this sort of annexation may affect the, the additional needs of the, for example, the building department in the city of Flagstaff, whether they have an engineer or not, or how it would delay permits and so forth because of the additional needs of the population and the various property holders. That is just one example that, in the sense of an implementation of the policies, once things are actually annexed. And I'm not sure if that's included in your scope here, but I thought I'd make that comment. Did you have a question, Ryan?
I don't know if Sarah wants to address that, about how that would.
Yeah, that's all. I would have had more if, in fact, Timberline or that area would be included in this annexation, but I think it's just a suggestion that we improve the, or at least comment on how implementation of the policies affects the property owners or particularly in that their particular needs to buy water, supply of electricity, working with the building departments for permits and so on. Thank you very much.
Um, Chair, I could ask Melissa Shaw from the county if maybe she can address those comments before calling up the person.
My phone a friend option?
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners, and good evening. I would like to, I'm Melissa Shaw. And just to, I guess, clarify again, the, the area of Donie Park, Timberline, Fernwood is not proposed to be annexed or supported to be annexed by the regional plan. So in terms of providing engineering review for any building permits or applications like that, the county does have an engineer on staff in our community development who regularly reviews plans that need engineer review. So I hope that answers your question about implementation of the regional plan policies. The, the regional plan policies are also supported and supplemented by the county's comprehensive plan and also the Donie Park, Timberline, and Wood area plans. So there are more specific planning documents that are related directly to that community and the county itself. Maybe if you have a further question, we can follow up later after the meeting.
I hope that answered your question for you.
Not fully.
Okay, so if you will meet, you can meet after the meeting's over? Okay, thank you. Michelle James, representing F3. Bit close. Everyone here?
My name is Michelle James. I'm the Executive Director of Friends of Flagstaff's Future. I live at 713 West Grand. FQ has been actively involved in the regional planning process, serving on the technical advisory committee and later appointed to the Community Regional Plan Committee. In addition, we've engaged often with multiple city staff to discuss our concerns and recommendations regarding the 60-day draft and the public hearing draft of the regional plan. We support the plan's core and complementary priorities, and would like to see these six priorities treated in a truly balanced manner, despite the two-tiered nature of their presentation in the plan. Addressing Flagstaff's declared emergencies of housing affordability and climate action are important. Over, we must also acknowledge that our city cannot function without the complementary, complementary, excuse me, priorities as well. The plan may not be dominated by housing density concerns that result in our deep prioritization of climate action and the four complementary actions, priorities, excuse me. FQ has sent written comments to P&amp;Z with recommendations of ways to strengthen and clarify the plan. I sent those very late last night, so. I don't have time here today to review all of them, but I would like to focus on two of our recommendations. Certainly, the language that limits water provision to inside the urban growth boundary and best practices for creating a sense of place. We recommend that the plan language be modified to make it clear that any proposal to provide water for any reason outside the urban growth boundary will require a major plan amendment. The current language indicates such an amendment would only be required if increasing density. Relatedly, strengthen the guidelines for all land use categories. To clarify that the statement "development requiring drinking water and sewer will be located within the urban growth boundary," that was a quoten, applies to any proposal that requires a development application, whether it's for a new development or for an existing development or home requesting water and sewer services. We've struggled with the limiting nature of the elements outlined in the best practices for creating a sense of place. The elements needed to retain or create what is essentially community character or community identity need to be expanded to include additional important characteristics that are found in the Flagstaff Historic Downtown and adjacent older neighborhoods. These additional important considerations are provided in detail in our written comments. Thank you for your efforts reviewing this plan.
Thank you. Next up to speak is Jacqueline Thomas. Again, if you will state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. I'm Jacqueline Thomas, 25 West Silver Spruce, and I'm here today on behalf of the Open Space Commission to share our recommended revisions to the draft Regional Land Use Plan 2045. The Open Spaces Commission has been keenly interested and involved in the development of the regional plan throughout the process. We gratefully received presentations from comprehensive and neighborhood planning staff, provided input from an open space perspective, received citizen comments, and formally reviewed and submitted a recommendation revision letter during the last public comment period in December. In short, we've worked hard to stay informed and engaged in the process, and recently have undertaken review of the current revised plan. Before submitting these comments, the Commission again had discussions with city planning staff to gather their insights and gain a deeper understanding of their perspective. We have now developed a set of recommendations that we believe are crucial for ensuring the document is both usable and representative of the community's needs. We clearly created a recommendation letter with 18 points for your consideration that has been emailed. I assure you that the Commission spent ample time deliberating these points and narrowing down their comments to those that would be the most impactful. To be respectful of our time, I'll share the Commission's main points, and I'm happy to address any questions we have. Our first significant point is about integration. Currently, open space isn't integrated into the plan in a way that aligns with the core priorities of housing and climate. For example, the plan calls housing and climate non-negotiable objectives. This indicates that the plan can complete complementary priorities will only be considered if the first core priorities are met. Then only then will the complementary priorities be considered. Second, the policy themselves need balance. Policy OS.2 is a good example. As this policy is written, it sounds like open space will only be considered where development can't happen. We're recommending revision to update that policy so that open space is a part of the design. Third, the regional plan needs to guide development, so it helps deliver the things of the community values. We need to ensure that projects include parks, trails, and access points in open spaces. We made some recommendations that are specific to this point, particularly mapping updates that pertain to open space needs for the community. For instance, we suggested adding clarifications to better communicate open space needs. And finally, I want to highlight policy map fix recommendation number eight in the letter. We're requesting your correction to the future growth illustration maps to prevent the loss of top priority trail corridor between the Leo de Flag Water Reclamation Plan and Forest Service land. This is an important wildlife corridor, a community connection, and a way to make sure neighborhoods can reach public lands. Along this corridor over suburban center, which includes medium to high intensity of people, residencies, jobs, and activities, is currently identified. Developmental goals for this zoning type may not support this longstanding trail corridor priority. We appreciate your time, and then do your organizing, Commissioner, so we're happy.
Thank you very much. You must have rehearsed that to get it.
Oh, yeah. We've been working on this a long time.
So thank you. That was, that was great.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is Mike Popjoy. Again, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello.
Hello, my name is Mike Popjoy. Thanks for your consideration. This evening, my address is 330 West Port Hills Drive, 86001. I really wanted to focus on one thing contained in the regional plan, which is the regional trails plan in particular.
the regional trails plan in particular. So there's a map, I forget which, uh, number the map is, but my understanding is that that trails plan came from, excuse me, our regional trail strategy that was developed a few years ago. And one thing I like to highlight is, um, a concern about the inclusion of unauthorized trails in that current map and plan. The vast majority of the trails in the trails plan are on Forest Service land but have not been approved by the Forest Service. In addition, these unauthorized trails were not in the trail strategy that the current plan is pulling from. So I'd just like to highlight a few concerns. This includes trails in sensitive wildlife habitat. It also includes some unauthorized trails that have been closed by an EBIT decision by the Forest Service, especially in the Mount Elkins or Lake Hills area. And it also includes unauthorized trails on land opened by an out of nations in the Mount Elkins or Lake Hills area. So my request would be that it not be updated to remove unauthorized trails from the regional trails plan that are currently shown on the map in the year plan. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Next is Raquel Simaconda. Please state your name and address for the record. I'm sorry, if my, is it Rachel? Sorry, that's okay.
It's Rachel Simaconda. I want to say good evening, Chair, Madam Chairperson, Vice Chair and Commissioners. I am here as a private citizen and I just have two things I'd like to bring to your attention. Uh, in the spirit of inclusivity for differently abled citizens, the maps are incredibly hard to see. Uh, we've got some visually disabled people, uh, and I've heard from them that they're very hard to understand. I don't know what the fix to that would be, but I think in a spirit of inclusivity, it needs to be considered. The other thing is, and this is also in the spirit of inclusivity, having your closed captions on, because when I attend next time, I will be on Zoom and closed captioning helps because I am hard of hearing. Uh, so the closed captioning would help. And then finally, I just want to give a shout out to you guys because this is not an easy job, I know. But I think that you guys have been doing a really good job on parts of the foot systems. And as somebody who is an open user, I just have to say Buffalo Park, I don't know if you guys were important with that, but Martin Ants really hit it hard apart with that. The other thing is right here along Forest Street, amazing. Three bicycles can pass me and we don't all have to crowd over to one side or the other. So really good job on portions of it. Now I did get stuck on a portion of Sandy Canyon. I'm sure you all know where that is, but, um, I got stuck on that and had to call. I'd called Power Rangers, so I just wanted to give a big shout out to this commission because I do believe you guys are doing some really important work and sometimes don't get acknowledged enough, so thank you.
Thank you. I don't know that that's part of our important work, but part of the other city commission's important work. So hopefully the city will let those commissioners know that you thank them for that. Also, I have to, can I say I agree on the maps? I am not yet visually challenged, but it's still, I'm challenged by the green and the colors on the maps and things, so it's very hard for me to distinguish, so I, I also agree with that, so. He else wants to add anything?
I'll, here, I'm a person who produces maps and I've had clients ask me to make them more accessible visually impaired. It's extremely difficult. It is very difficult, so I want to applaud those who have made the maps. I see both sides of it, but it could be very challenging to convey that information in grayscale or shades of olive or yellow. It could be very difficult.
Thank you for sharing that. Yes.
I, I do want to say, and I said it at the last meeting, that because of that difficulty with a print map, we can certainly run it back through the, the tools that we have. But yes, there's, when, once you get past six colors on a map, it, it's really impossible to make it fully accessible at the scale that we are using these maps at. However, when we, we have a, a draft interactive map platform posted to the website, which we hope once the maps are finalized, adopted by council and being put to the ballot, the GIS staff has said they would create some accessible version and layers that can be turned on and off that are more highlighted texture and other things. It, it's just a limitation of once, when you're producing a document versus what we are able to do with our GIS online environment. And, and we will use the tools available so that there is a fully accessible version. Or, and, and for color blindness, accessible looks different depending on the kind of color blindness you have, but we can set it up that way, which was not something we could do 10 years ago very easily.
Thank you very much. So hopefully those updates will come about when the, when this gets approved and then GIS makes those, um, maps more accessible. Before, in case of others. Thank you, Sarah. Next, I have a comment by Taylor Surchi. Can you pronounce that wrong? I apologize, but if you'll give your name and address for the record, please.
All right, uh, my name is Taylor Surchi. I live at 2252 East Arroyo Safeway Drive. I really only have one kind of specific question of, since this is a pretty long-term regional plan, I'm hoping that there's nothing that would necessarily block, uh, the possibility of light rail or passenger rail expansion in the future. I know that's really iffy because it usually requires federal funding, which right now, but, you know, who knows what will happen in the next 10 years? So that's really, um, the only question I have for the outlook of, you know, has that been considered? And, you know, do you know the answer to that of the regional plan, not necessarily supporting it, but not getting in the way either?
Sarah, I will refer to you.
Sure, I can, I can answer that question. So for passenger rail, the plan does have a goal of supporting passenger rail and mode shift at our passenger rail hub in the downtown. There's only one in town. But I did go back to Mountain Line. That comment was provided as part of the 60-day public review and so I showed it to Mountain Line, our local transit agency. We are, as a city, just big enough and just dense enough to support bus rapid transit, which is a la, a level of transit speed that is about providing efficiencies for buses on the roadways. But you have to have a certain density and intensity to support light rail. Far beyond what our plan supports. And so the plan is not, there, and also you have to have some proximity. So the spacing out of our region means that we would need a bigger area than just Flagstaff to make that work. And also we would have trouble going north to south. There were many failed historic railroads that tried to get up the rim over the course of the last two centuries. Um, and so it's, uh, there are some geographic barriers to like a light rail to Phoenix or, and the Verde Valley, for instance. Um, and then there are some density and intensity barriers that the plan does support increasing density and intensity, but maybe not to the scale that might be needed. So that is a beyond, probably beyond the 20 years that the plan has in it. But if passenger rail, high-speed passenger rail, passenger rail improvements were proposed through the region, the plan would support those.
Thank you. Hopefully that answers your question on that. I know at a former meeting I talked about playing vehicles. I'm supporting light rail as well, but anyhow, we.
Transportation technology is changing rapidly.
It is changing rapidly and that may mean amendments to the regional plan if that occurs, so. And I think there could be amendments to those items if that were to occur. Thank you. Charity Lee. Yes, you'll state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Commissioners, Charity Lee with Caston Homes, 1385 University Avenue. I sent you an email late this afternoon. I did, I printed it, but I was reading through it and I realized I had a typo, so I'm going to fix that and resend it, but I just want to not go through the whole thing, but just kind of call out a couple key points. One of the things that I saw when I was reading through the plan was there wasn't an implementation plan and one of the other speakers had mentioned this too, but I think what I'm coming at it is you have your goals and you have your policies, but how are you going to do this? So if you had a, an implementation plan that was supported with, um, actual specific things that staff could achieve within the next year, 10 years, I think that would be really, I'm glad to see. Another thing, again, I'm going to just mention the maps. I couldn't tell on some of the properties what color they were and maybe that's my own personal issue, but specifically the shark bite to me looked like it was between rural neighborhood or suburban corridor. So I wasn't 100% sure on that. I was thinking it was suburban corridor, but I couldn't tell. And then, um, dwelling units, I did find it after I looked again, but I, I would like to say that suburban neighborhood, um, we would promote, um, there's a range from 2 to 29, not a minimum of 5, so for suburban neighborhood. Um, I had some suggestions for some wordsmithing, which I'll again send it to you and fix my, my error. I did have a question on public facilities and infrastructure, bullet number two. I didn't understand what they were really saying there, so maybe staff can explain that. Natural resources, number three, I'm suggesting to remove that altogether. This is bullet point number three. I don't understand why we're suggesting to follow, um, Arizona State Mining Inspection and Urban Protection Guidance. So I'd like an explanation there. Policy maps 4 through 3 and 4 through 4. They show, um, roads on Juniper Point and Canyon Del Rio, Juniper Point specifically and Canyon Del Rio that should be, um, removed or they should be operated to minor collectors. Our plan hasn't yet determined if they're major collectors, so I'd like staff to look at that. And also, um, uh, hang on one second. Submittals for trails across Canyon Del Rio should match current development plans that we've recently submitted. And then I would also add that on policy maps 4 through 6, that you include disclaimer language also for private properties, not just only specific to the, um.
Sarah, thank you. Thank you. Sarah, do you want to address any of that or just take that as comment?
Is there a part of it, like clarification on?
I don't, I can't remember, so.
Let me, uh, I do have, uh, Miss Lee's, uh, written comment. Hang on just a second.
I wish we went over it briefly, but.
So I think that addressing to her about the implementation plan, that it's, um.
Oh yes, so chapters, chapters five through 11 basically are our implementation plan. They have action items in each chapter. You know, you have to organize things a certain way in the document because you're trying to get information across, but. It's not uncommon that we create guides and shorthand documents. So I think, um, pulling all the action items or reorganizing them instead of by chapter in a different way in some kind of future document after adoption, so that there's another way to look at them or understand them, um, is certainly a reasonable thing for staff to do as an additional product in the future. Um, but there is an action plan, chapters five through 11 have that. Finally, another thing I would, I would address, because it's very technical and weird, is the, um, inspector's aggregate protection guidance. The state statute requires.
So you're going to go right into the legal findings. The state statute requires that the city include a map of existing aggregate mineral sources known in the city.
And then it says we should have some guidance for it.
We, that requirement existed in 2012, but we didn't put anything in the current plan.
So we really had to do that from scratch. So one of my interns went and did research on what every other plan that he could find did about aggregate materials. And it was not very consistent or easy to understand. And so we called the state mining inspector, who is, who is referenced and the, basically the experts on aggregate protection and said, what do you recommend? And they said, well, at the time that that legislation existed, was put in place, we didn't have any guidance put out for aggregate protection, so everyone was making up their own way. Their recommendation to staff was that we just include a reference to their guidance. Their guidance is written to be implemented a certain way, but it certainly has, they felt it was flexible enough to be, um, understood for like what it was recommending in period. They kind of have a method. They recommend you implement it with a zoning code amendment, but they said even if we chose not to do that, they felt we could use the guidance in it if we had a discretionary case. So if we delete that, we might be out, we might have to have an e-session to determine if we would be out of conformance with the findings required under the state statute. So I don't, I don't know the answer to that, but if you would like more detail on it, we could prepare something for the 24th.
Your explanation is good, so I don't, but I don't know about other commissioners.
Sort of a, my question has been related to that specifically, but several of the comments were centered around uh, what the current policy maps showed in terms of what's a collector road, what's a minor collector road, what have you. Could you explain what the process is when there is a conflict between what is currently or what ultimately gets adopted versus what the plans truly require?
Happy to. So the lines on the map and the levels listed are, um, good first guesses in the areas where we don't have a developed road system yet. We will always, in those areas, need additional minor collectors or we might have to route them differently. We don't require a plan amendment generally. If you are taking a line in the map and connecting, having similar connectivity connecting similar places. They are not hard lines when there's no road system out there, much just a completely undeveloped piece of land. But if the proposal reduces the connectivity on the site or is, you know, being done in a way that's very, very different than what the plan has, then yes, minor amendments to the plan could be, could be required depending on the details of that. And staff would have to work with engineering to make those recommendations. But the state requires that we identify a future road network with collectors and arterials. And then we, we do that across areas within the region. There are two areas, one kind of near the, um, the, uh, water treatment plant that's under I-40 and then the other out in east Flagstaff in the Picture Canyon area where we have a blue bubble on those maps that we say defined for future connectivity study. That does not mean is free for all, or that there's no connections that are going to happen in that area. It's simply that the natural resources or cultural resources. The topography and the unknown of what kind of development we might see in that area because it's a difficult developed area, um, means we have chosen not to put roads, but to recognize that before new road networks proceed, they need a connectivity study to understand how connections are being made across properties and where the connections are being created. So that's what's in the future road network, not right now. So if someone came through and their property was vacant, we drew a road network on it that wasn't feasible, we would look at that and it would be part of the consideration of how much change could be acceptable. It, it does have not necessarily direct subjectivity to it, but it is a call that would be made on a case, by case basis.
All right, thank you. Mary?
I just wanted to go on to that part about, you know, where the things are drawn now. And obviously this is a long process. It's been going on for a while and things have changed even during that process, such as, um, the trails that Charity Lee mentioned on Canyon Del Rio. They're now probably adopted with the Phase 2 Hudson Canyon or whatever that is. They're now probably adopted with the Phase 2 Hudson Canyon, whatever they've approved. Also, land ownership with certain state land parcels. How do we ensure that the final draft that gets adopted is up to date at time of adoption, not when it was originally first scheduled, like as far as like land ownership and trails and such?
So Commissioner Norton, I know the comment you sent in on land ownership or the errata. The property you were referring to that actually is not owned yet by that property owner. So state land, when it is put to auction, just because someone won the auction doesn't mean they yet own the property. They own the property when it is conveyed, which is not done sometimes for months or years, because they have to meet criteria that state land sets. So we do not change property ownership information unless it is already in the assessor's data. So we're, there are times, of course, where state land is gonna be auctioned, and that's really definitely property ownership that's shown on the policy maps as state lands. And that, that won't change anything, because state land is treated just like private land in many cases in our, in our maps and in our network, so. It will be updated sometimes on policy maps. Informational maps in the plan, because we have created a list of administrative changes, can be updated for the most up-to-date information. But policy maps will be a different piece. We are recommending, and we recommended in the staff report, adding an administrative change category. It basically says, any changes that are adopted by council between October 9th and the ratification can be updated administratively. So if we did an application and council approves it in March for a plan amendment, and council approves it, you know, or a plaque or something like that, they include it, they approve it in like March 2026, we would administratively change that provision, because it's an approval associated with that already, if you choose to add that administrative change. And you may wanna wordsmith that administrative change category. I think it's category number 7. For that, but that's, that is how we propose. Like, yes, sometimes these maps don't match what ultimately gets constructed, especially when a property owner uses their existing entitlements.
So that would apply to trails on property that she was talking about, as well as potential ownership changes? Those could be administrative changes along the way after the plan is adopted?
Not always.
Not all.
Not, and not to the policy map. So some of them will be out of date. That is just part of the nature of it being a living document. And we will keep proposing amendments and make sure those are updated as best we can.
Thank you. So I have one last, left, I have one card left. If anybody else would like to make a statement, I encourage you to run over and fill out a card. Other than that, the person I have left to speak is Jean Christie. Again, if you can please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Jean Christie. My address is 6825 East Eagle Crest Drive, 86004. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for your service. Appreciate the hard work that you do, Sarah. I sat through your presentation, City Hall, impressive. And I don't claim to know very much about what you're doing. I'm college educated, not as smart as my brothers, they keep reminding me. I consider somewhat intelligent, and I cannot get through that 35-page presentation for the life of me. And so I'd like the council to consider making their publications that will be voted on accessible to the not-so-smart-as-their-brother people by having, and this will have the effect of, or something like that, so that people who don't have the time or experience or degrees to process all of this stuff, I think one of the council members even mentioned it at the last, or the commissioner members, mentioned, what about the average person, you know? Because these decisions that you make affect us as well. My family's been here for generations, and some of the trails that have been unauthorized or whatever are, are trails that my family has walked for a long time. So think about the average person, please, and try and make your material as accessible as possible. And as you consider options for sustainability, and I have sent him an email as well. Let's think about Flagstaff. Most Flagstaff, we're not a cookie cutter, New York, Minnesota. One thing I read even said, oh, well, the way that they park on the streets is Rome. I'm like, I've been to Rome, we don't compare to Rome, we don't drive little mini cars like they do in Rome. So let's keep it what, what looks like Flagstaff, the people that live in Flagstaff, and make sustainable Flagstaff. So that's what I'm gonna say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Can, can I just say very quickly, I don't have your written comment in my email? No, cuz it's just been. Okay, it's just, but I was looking and I was like, oh, no, I don't think I have it. So if I don't, if I don't get it by the end of the hearing, if you wouldn't mind visiting with me and making sure I get it in the right email, thank you. I don't wanna miss anyone's comments. There's a lot to take.
Do we have any comments that were from online? Nobody has a question or a comment online? I see a hand up from Sarah Hall. Sarah, again, if you'll state, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes as everybody else has had.
Yes, hi, thank you. My name is Sarah Hall at 9595 Stardust Trail, out here in Donnie Park, 86004. My question is, I'm not quite sure if I maybe missed it, or what are the implications of this project on current homeowners and our current land that we own? Is there any chance that that the city will be minimizing the land that we own?
I'm sorry, I was trying to take notes. I'll leave that to Sarah for the answer, but.
Ms. Hall, if that's at the end of your comments, we can answer, but if not, because you're timed, I'd suggest you just proceed and we'll try and answer your questions at the end.
That was all I needed to know, is whether or not I have to worry about my own property lines being approached on by this new plan. And that's the end.
Try and answer that question. The regional plan does not affect existing entitlements. So whatever a person's property is currently zoned, they have the right to come in for building permits and site plans and concept plans under those existing entitlements. The regional plan is triggered, a review with the regional plan is triggered when a property owner requests different entitlements, so different ability to have land uses, or different zoning categories on their property, and when they request to be annexed into the city. So now, if it, we're talking about adjacent properties, adjacent property owners have the same, the same right to make applications under the current zoning and the regional plan. And so if a property owner does not like what the regional plan says, they can request as a future land use under the plan, they can also request an amendment to the plan. And to provide due process to everyone, staff processes those using a consistent set of criteria, applications, and procedures. So that is, so not, there's no effect to your property from the regional plan directly without you coming in and requesting it. And the regional plan also has a list of action items in chapters 5 through 11, and some of those are recommending changes to the zoning code. When the zoning code is updated, it can change what is permitted or not permitted on your property. And that is, that is a process that, where the new proposal is compared to the regional plan, but it goes through a public hearing process. It's a second process that has to occur at some time in the future. Adoption of the regional plan itself changes no entitlements on any property in the region. Long answer and a short answer.
Thank you very much.
And that's the same in the county area as well? Will I speak to that?
Melissa nodded yes, and so, but do you wanna come answer further?
Thank you again, and I'm just to clarify, so the area, Donnie Park, is in the county, so that's county, under county jurisdiction. And the regional plan, like Sarah mentioned, does not change any existing property lines. It doesn't propose to do that. And just to remind everybody that the county comprehensive plan and the area plan for Donnie Park, termite, Fernwood, also apply to that area, not just the regional plan. So just to kind of clarify again, that that area is still under county jurisdiction.
Thank you very much.
Pardon me, and one more, one more question. There is a specific process that is called a land division or a subdivision that could change property lines, but that is a specific request by a property owner to do something like that. So that's a much more technical process to form what we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other online comments? See any hands up, but I'm gonna scroll. So I don't see any other online comments. So Sarah, our next step would be to enter any discussion that we want to have, or do we want to? I do wanna say that if anybody here, or online, or anybody else that you know wants to make comments, you can do so, online is the preferred, to email your comments. So again, if you'll give that address, cuz I don't have it memorized.
Right, it's regionalplan45comments@flagstaffez.com. And that is, we have that on the project website as well, so people can find it. And it's on the postcard. If you got the postcard, it's in the newspaper ad, if you've seen the newspaper ad. The process going forward is. Yes, it is time for you to start your discussion tonight. When we continue the hearing at the end of the meeting, you can also take public participation cards and new public participation at the next meeting as well. So people who've not spoken, maybe just listened tonight, or maybe couldn't join tonight, can join on the 24th, and we will have another round of public comment for consideration. But for tonight, from this point, you actually have a nice robust 90 minutes. Lauren can pull up the conditions of approval, holding space, and we can start talking through that. If that's how you'd like to proceed. I have a few other questions. I know Ms. Sharp earlier said he had a lot of questions, so if you'd like to start with questions and then move to the holding space, or start in the holding space.
Okay, we can start with questions. Meantime, I'm running to the restroom.
There are some public comments that were made tonight that I think would warrant further discussion in the, in the holding space.
Do you wanna call out what those were? So Elsa and Lauren can put them in the right column?
Yes, so I just wanted to clarify, so I know that we talked a little bit already about the letter that was going to be sent, but there, as some of the speakers were hearing, as I kind of went back through comments that I had saved, I just wanted to make sure that we had elevated Russell Randall's letter and comments, and Rachel's, Rachel Simukandu's comments, and they were all sent into the same realm.
How would you like to do that, Commissioner Norton? Do you want to just have us copy all of those over that might, that we've not? Or do you, are there, I think what I would encourage is for lengthy comment letters like that, and if you're not prepared to do it tonight, that's fine, that you actually call out specifically what parts you would like carry forward. If we took the whole thing forward, I think we would spend more than, maybe in time discussing all of those.
Either I or other commissioners, we probably need to specifically go through their letters. On a topical level, I think these are the things that we should potentially talk about.
So would you have some notes on what topics you'd want? Cuz we could pull the portions of their letters that cover specific topics.
I would have to be prepared to give you that, which I'm not tonight. You know, I just, I really thought that tonight would be all public comment, and we wouldn't be having these discussions until the next public hearing.
That's fine, we will have time at the next public hearing. And you could, like we said, email myself and Alex Cutirelli if you wanted to, like, load us with that in advance, and then we could.
Okay.
We could have it ready, so that you could describe it on the 24th, and it would be ready to pull up on the screen right away.
Right.
I just wanna make sure that's not getting discussed outside of the hearing, but you can tell us, like, please have this prepared, so I can speak to it at the hearing.
I'll be interested in seeing Sot Best's email with the comments that he made, and Russell Randall, and be interested in seeing Mike Popejoy's comments about unauthorized trails.
Did I address that one really quick, Commissioner Norton? Martin Ince did not join us yet tonight, but I think he, oh, no, he made it, there you go. Martin, would you like to talk about the regional trails map and the Flagstaff Trails Initiative really quick? Would it be okay to pause?
Yeah, that would be, that would be fine. I just kinda wanted to hear more about the unauthorized trails that they feel that are represented, so, yeah.
I'd like Martin to answer that.
Before Martin, you take this, can I just add that there's probably portions of Charit Lee's letter that I would wanna ask questions about, so, but I just wanted to bring that up.
Sure, yeah, that, and that is, it should be in your inbox, but I'll, we'll organize that as well.
Commissioner Members, Martin Ince, I'm a transportation planner for the city. So that, that trails map has two different types of trails, existing, Forest Service trails, single-track trails, and planned trails. The existing trails, it looks like that data was taken from a couple different layers. And I think, I talked to Mike Popejoy after his comments, and some of the trails that are depicted on the existing trails may be considered unauthorized or non-system trails, either Forest Service. We have a good set of data that has all the Forest Service, county, city trails that are considered official and system. So I would leave it to Sarah to figure out the best process for considering them as part of that map. But we can certainly provide the information to meet his concerns, to make sure we don't have any social trails depicted.
I just wanted to make sure we, you know, acknowledge that if there were unauthorized trails, you know, that it's been checked, you know.
Yes, thank you for that. We have worked with Forest Service and the county to make sure that all the trails that we have in our data layer, they're considered to be official trails. So we have a fairly high degree of confidence that we don't have social trails depicted, or unauthorized trails depicted in our current layer. Quick, real quickly, the second, the second piece was the planned trails, and those are all taken from Flagstaff Trails Strategy from a couple of years ago. The Forest Service, and that, the Trail Strategy was developed by a multi-jurisdictional Flagstaff Trails Initiative. Most of them are on Forest Service land, and they have a different kind of outlook on planned trails. And I, and I think they may have asked for, in their comments, for a disclaimer to reflect their position on planned trails on Forest Service land.
Thank you. Yeah, unless, are you fine with withdrawing that as a further discussion point, unless any other commissioner had other questions?
Yeah, Commissioner Norton, there's terminology around trails. We have a lot of comments about trails, first of all. The planned trails, some of those currently are unauthorized. The Forest Service would have to do NEPA, they would have to go through a process like they did for the Dry Lake Hills. In some of the trails plan, in the Dry Lake Hills plan, the Coquigny National Forest. In some of the trails planned, in the Dry Lake Hills Plan, the Coquigny National Forest has a history of taking some unauthorized trails and improving them or adopting them as they are. So just because a road, a trail is currently considered unauthorized does not necessarily mean it won't someday be part of the system. So this is like a nuance, right? They don't want to, much like other conversations we've had, we don't want to encourage people on unauthorized trails, but there is also no prohibition from hiking cross-country anywhere on a national forest. So unlike National Park Service land, you can just walk in a forest. You don't, there's no limitation, so. It's a little bit different than the conversations where people are, I don't want people trespassing on my property unless there's an actual forest closure. You, you may walk as you will in the forest, considering being responsible for your own safety. And will be, but, you know, we do a lot of rescue around here. You know how that works out. So, but yeah, so I mean, I think if we need to clean up the existing trails later, that would be a good thing to take forward in your conditions of approval. And Martin and I can keep working on that this month and try and get it updated back to council.
I, I'm okay knowing that you're on it. And I know through open space, obviously, we all looked at the trail systems and made adjustments, which is, this was not one of them that was our concern. And I've, having been through the Observatory Mesa Trade Up Plan process with the Open Space Commissioner, I completely understand what you're talking about with regard to unauthorized, and some of them get adopted, so I'm fine with that. Any discussion? Questions?
How exciting.
How exciting.
So I'll, I'll start with my biggest complaint about this, and it's a really good plan. There's a lot to it. It took me a lot of reading, and I spent a ton of time. I think my biggest complaint has to do with the six priorities, the two core and the four complementary. I would like to see that framework totally revised, and it's six six prior, all of equal weighting. And that way, as things come up, the powers that be can decide based upon what comes up. I'm afraid that with the, the two core, you're going to find yourself ignoring problems as they come up. You know, that may come up and will get neglected because there might be a housing reason or whatnot. And in the end, if you don't have a good, robust economy, and if you don't have a place that people want to live in, well, housing affordability doesn't matter. And addressing climate change isn't going to happen. You know, if, if the economy's there, not, if the economy's not there to sustain your climate change goals, nothing's going to happen. So my position would be rearrange this so they're all six equal priorities, and then maybe change the language so that if something comes in, three of them have to be addressed. Don't say two to the exclusion of the other four. That would be where I'll start with this.
Does anybody have any discussion around that?
I think that's maybe to add that to the holding space, if people want time to think about it, or you can have discussion now.
Anybody? CJ?
Oh.
I guess I'll add on to that. We had that discussion in open space. Because we know that, you know, open space was represented within two of the preliminary, but it either maybe deserved its own, or maybe others that got elevated to the six. So I, you know, there's been other discussions on that. You know, our viewpoint in the regional plan, that can be, you know, revised. And I understand why we got to the two core because of the declared emergencies. I get that. I too, on a personal level, you know, feel that, you know, when you're looking at a plan that's going to last ten to fifteen years, if we don't have some equal weighting to some of those other priorities that are important to residents, that they do start to slip away, you know, or do we, what do we give away? By just centering on those two core. So I do worry about that balance. Whether it's a discussion we have as far as a recommendation, I I'm not sure we're at that point to, to be able to do that at this point in the game. And I just wanted to say what long process is the thing? And Sarah and the team, it's like having two thousand clients review your work, and I sympathize with that deeply, having been in like a career that serves clients that are evaluating things like that or creative work. So I just want to acknowledge all the hard work and how difficult this is to want to be reviewed over and over and over. But I also feel how important it is that we just get these last little pieces in here that the people and the stakeholders and the interested parties really feel that they have that represented, representation so that this regional plan can be overwhelmingly accepted and approved.
Commissioner Norton, I appreciate the, the wisdom to look at how much work is the change that you're asking for at this point. I think that, that that's a good, like, weight to add to the scale here and understanding is it's probably, if you're doing some things that are not like rearranging all of chapter three, but maybe changing the directory wording or that language that we talked about in chapter two, that is, that I showed on the slide, that's like a streamlined idea. If you're like, I want to reorganize all the priorities and all the policies around, that's a really big idea, and that's the kind that would take a big lift. Like, it took us three months to do that last time between the sixty day public review. And now we had it, you know, we did not organize the policies by priorities in the sixty day public review, but we chose to do that because the feedback was so overwhelming in terms of the climate priority and the housing priority and the public comments. So really, the priorities were based on the feedback from the public, not staff's necessary targets. It's just that those aligned with the public feedback volume and tone lined with the emergencies that the city has. So if you think there's a better way to organize it, I think you can make out a recommendation to council and counsel why you need to weigh that with all the public comment. That's why all the sixty day public review comments are in your packet, in council's packet, is because, yeah, it's like the two thousand clients, you, you as a commissioner are one of the clients, right? Because you'll be doing a lot of the implementation work as a body in the future. So I think if you have an idea that's not enabled with public comments, it's right, keep it, propose it, like, and then it will be up to council on whether they want to change the proposal on how. But it is good to be mindful of, like, how much referring needs to be here at this lead and cause a project delay. So, thank you.
I think, I think maybe the offset, and this is how I've rectified it in my mind, is, you know, if we're going to have these two core priorities, and whether we're able to serve those core priorities through this regional plan over the next ten years, if it really works out. But by having some of these verbiage changes that have been suggested, little pieces, little seeds that are planted within the regional plan in other places that leave it open to exploring, you know, these things that have been, you know, become only complementary and maybe even less than. I think that gives plan the flexibility to pivot as necessary. So, you know, I think knowing what a structural change it would be to change the way that priorities are listed, I would support leaving them as is, but really strongly considering some of these thought-out, research-deep revisions that have been asked. That may seem minor, may seem like just a word we are there, but to the people that know how it could be implemented and, and grabbed on to later to go in a different direction if necessary, I think it gives that opportunity, so. And my my thought, can you hear me? Shows it's on. My thought is that, you know, as this is a, a long-term plan, this is twenty forty-five, right? So we may have priorities that change, but then hopefully the plan is fluid for amendments for those. So that, let's say, we meet the core two and something else becomes core. Or that we see that a change is needed, that is that something that could be amended in the, in the subsequent years?
Yes, Chairman Dino, changing the priorities would be a minor regional plan amendment. And up to the discretion of council to probably propose.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion about this point, these points? Any other discussion? Anybody else? CJ? Seen any other, just outweigh CJ?
No, none for me.
Okay, thank you. You have other question?
No.
I had a handful of questions on infill. Infill seems to be a big part of this, and rightly so, and I think you might have seen one of my comments had to deal with so much where infill might be is potentially under your floodplain. So I think there's a conflict the city's going to have to deal with as this progresses, and that something everybody can deal with down the road. One of the things is infill, it assumes infill is going to reduce infrastructure costs, so you're infilling in areas that already have utilities and all that. Has the city put in effort to figure out if these utilities have capacity to take care of infill, so increasing density and things like that? Or is that a plan to be done down the road?
Commissioner Sharp, then we did the twenty eighteen High Occupancy Housing Plan. We did a broad plan level look at that. There's two maps in our High Occupancy Housing Plan called the readiness and the preparedness maps, and those were where we looked at where is our infrastructure prepared for larger, denser, more intense uses, and where is it in need of additional improvements in order to support that? And so we do have some broad-scale maps to do that. The water and, the Water Services Master Plan is due to be updated soon. So for water and sewer, we'll be taking a look at that after the plan's adopted. Like, once the plan's adopted, that will be the baseline for any new analysis of what you're talking about. For streets, we are in, the metro plan is working with the city, and we are in the process of doing a similar analysis called our Safe Streets Master Plan, which is really, it's a transportation master plan, period. It's not just about safety. And we're hiring a consultant to lead a two-to-three-year process to update that as well. So the plan, like thinking of the triangle, what you're asking is blue questions, not the brown level questions, not the, not that the rune base. So the blue level work is on deck right now to answer some of those things. I did talk with Ed Shank, our stormwater manager today, about your question about infill areas that are in the floodplain. And he said, yes, it's in the floodplain. It's not always, especially the five hundred floodplain, it's not always impossible to develop, but those are the cost of the He said those might need a more refined look at some point in the future, but that's probably, again, a blue level future study that we even need to do as we start heading into that.
And you have a good point. Those are blue level issues, but then I think about those blue level issues feed back into can this plan actually work? So if you have, you know, fifty properties are in a floodplain that if you're going to redevelop them, all require three feet of fill, it may never work. And so what's the point of the plan? So it, it kind of goes hand in hand, and I'm not discrediting the plan. I think, I think infill's the right answer, but it's going to take a lot of work to do it right.
I think, I think the preferred scenario estimated that the densest scenario put about five hundred new units in floodplains, where like the least dense scenario put more, close to like five, three hundred units in like alluvial fans. So a lot of the question of like, how predictable is the hazard? Alluvial fans, and we're getting into details here, I know, have a less predictable hazard, right? Because they usually require disturbance to cause flooding, where like mapped floodplains are a little more of a predictable hazard. So we did look at that in the scenario planning, and we tried to optimize it. But that's not as precise as some of those other follow-up studies that I think are going to be needed.
The other big question I have with infill, I have two really. It, it, it seems like it's just leading to gentrification, and I don't know how you deal with that. But the other question I have is, you know, infill, in my mind, is prime property for short-term rentals and second homes. And I don't know how the city deals with that, but I would love to see language added to this document that at least says, we as a city are going to try to do these things. We're going to work with the other cities in the state to try to make the state see even problems that we need to address, and maybe come up some creative solutions to help prevent that, because otherwise, what's the point?
We do have language under development pattern policies. Policy DP dot three says keep standards up to date on emerging land use issues that support housing attainability and carbon neutrality, such as legislative changes, short-term rental regulations, and carbon dioxide removal technology. That's actually written though to be a lot, that's really is a such as list. That could be a lot of other things. Right now, on short-term rentals, pretty heavily preemptive by our state legislature. I think you have probably heard that cities and counties throughout the state started to lobby for those changes. That is also listed in chapter five as an action item that we need to keep following up on the impacts of short-term rentals to the community. Otherwise, the plan talks about displacement in the housing attainability and neighborhood and equity goals, and says that we'd like to mitigate and minimize displacement of residents and prevent the loss of existable, existing affordable housing units. And so that is, that's the policy that we, we have written. I think also Friends of Flagstaff's Futures comments included ways they thought that topic could be expanded in their opinion in the, in the plan. So that's a, I think that's right for discussion, and some of that's in the holding space now. And when we send it out, you might look at it and see if there's an element to that that is not discussed, that you don't want to see. But short-term rentals, what we can put in the plan and what's relevant to land use decision-making is here. Is it satisfactory to everyone who's concerned how it's impacting affordability in our city and region? No. But it's not that way for staff either. But we have to have a feasible, implementable legal plan, and so. Another area that if the world opens up legally, I hope we have policies that mean we don't have to amend the plan. It will just be something that the city can start doing code updates, once those opportunities become available.
Yeah, I, I feel like the short-term rentals is the thing that we keep hitting our head against the wall every time we have a PNC meeting. I'd love to see it next. Anybody else have questions? Just take the mic. So I have a lot of questions. Preferred scenario, it sounds very aspirational. This idea that we're going to reduce housing costs by twenty percent sounds great. If we woke up tomorrow and all of a sudden housing costs were twenty percent cheaper than they are today, I don't know that it's going to change anything. When you think about housing is a regional problem. There's too many houses short in California alone, and all the other cities in Arizona are short. I don't know how it changes anything. It's still is a, it's a market-driven economy. And so if housing developer can sell their home for twenty percent less, but there's still drive to sell those homes, I don't know how we're going to change much. That's not to say we shouldn't try to make things less expensive and easier to develop, but I really don't buy what the preferred scenario is trying to sell, that it's going to bring costs down. Has that criticism been brought up? Have you guys thought through that? What are the answers to that?
I think I can answer from the preferred scenario standpoint, but I wonder if, Michelle, if you want to offer some suitability study findings? They're kind of, they're kind of hand-in-hand things we looked at. We didn't look at one all by itself. Do you want to? So I don't really, okay. I'll, I'll try and start. So, the preferred scenario now, the way it is developed is that it is, there's, the four scenarios, I just want to go over this. I know you've read it, but other people who might not know, we're talking about, who listen to, who are listening, I want to make sure they understand it. It's what we created for It's what we created for scenarios of how the, how the pattern of development, the density and intensity of development can be done differently over a twenty-year period. And we try to understand if the pattern matters. That's really what the scenario planning is about. It cannot take into account macro, like what you described, like the housing market in California. I call those macroeconomic conditions that are outside the control of the plan. So you have to do some controlling for those to be scalable or trending. And we basically just hold them constant in the preferred scenario, because there is not anything that the regional plan can do about the housing market in California, or how Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac are issuing mortgages, or what the Fed set the mortgage rate at. That's all just something that happens in that sphere. But what the preferred scenario does, and this is where I think people are misunderstanding it, is it tests these scenarios to figure out which performs the best, not in one's condition, but in many future conditions. So it's trying to pick not the best scenario, but the most resilient scenario. So it's saying, if the market is really good and it's still growing, this still helps us. If the market is starting to decline and we're in recession, it also still helps us. If the, if the way that housing is constructed and technology in housing is changed, these policies can still help us. So it is looking for that like sweet spot where funding availability and climate change in our region and those macroeconomic trends are out there, but we have picked our best performance point. So that's very different than like it being the best scenario or guaranteeing it will perform this way. It's, it is what the consultant called a crash test dummy. We are testing it and testing it and testing it. We do it iteratively. And so the preferred scenario is the best crash test dummy. It's the, it is the vehicle that did the best to protect us when the vehicle crashed. Like the dummies were survived, they had the least injuries. So when you think of it that way, that's what the preferred scenario is about. It is not a tell-all, but what it says is it could, it could best protect us. But if you are crushed by a semi truck, you might still be injured. And there's no control over that. And then I'll have Michelle talk a little bit about other findings from the last cap.
Thanks, Michelle Newcol, City Planning and Development Services Director. And I, and I wanted Sarah to speak to the scenario planning first, because she definitely has her head around that more. And so at the same time, we were doing a lot of that, we were doing a land availability and understanding how much land do we even have left? And you guys have heard that presentation, but you know, just for anybody listening, in trying to understand how much land do we have left? And do we even have enough to meet, you know, our kind of housing goal of eight thousand? And the answer is yes, we do, if we're efficient with the land use. And so, you know, to your point about if we build it, doesn't mean it necessarily doesn't get absorbed by a different market. And when I say different market being people who maybe don't live here full-time, people who are using it as a commercial type of property. But what we did find is that, you know, removing the barriers, everything matters. There are so many costs, you know, when you look at the soft cost of the land and different things. And then, you know, everything Sarah talked about with the interest rates. And there is the market aspect, but there is the supply and demand. And when we don't have enough supply, that demand gets higher. So we do have some level of comfort that if we can at least get more supply, we do start to reduce that demand. But it is a matter of everybody in the industry working together, right? Like, we can make code changes and we can start to remove the barriers, time, this money. So if we can bring more production online of a variety of housing types, then we allow people to move out of housing. You know, we have, we have a lot of different challenges, not just with supply, but also people having a housing type to move into. We have people who have outgrown their homes and they need a bigger home. We have people who are empty-nestered, they want a smaller home. The reality is with the interest rates and the supply as they are, nobody's leaving where they're at. And so we need that supply to keep everybody moving. But we, we need everybody in the industry and in the market to be doing something to be moving that needle. And I would just say, and I think you touched on it, we can't just not do anything because we're afraid it's not enough. We have to keep, I, I want to say chipping away. And I think we need to be taking big bites out of this, but for lack of better words, I'll just say we need to all be chipping away at this and improving it however we can. Thanks.
Excellent answers. I really appreciate that.
One other relevant thing Commissioner Sharp to bring up is sorry, I'm trying to keep my, my cough from coming back, I have pretty bad allergies. In chapter five and four, there are people brought up with a lot of our projections and the cost pieces of like how much housing costs and how much rent is. That we have added a lot of rental units, more than we did in the previous fifteen years and the last fifteen years. So since twenty ten, let's say. And that's good news in some ways. And there is some very fresh, not replicatable yet, market evidence that we are starting to see rents stabilize. They're still very high. But we look quarterly, we look annually, we're trying to understand those changes over time. But it's just inconclusive right now whether the units we've added have stabilized rents permanently or if there's something in the bigger market going on. But if we look at that data in three years and we see rents stabilize, stabilize and started to go down, then we'll know we have done something. But the responsiveness of the data to our actions in land use planning is long. Mike, take us, you know, we started the trend of adding a lot of rental units in twenty ten. And you've heard all the public hearing comments about that for the last, however many years you have been on the commission. It is, it is a question mark. And housing and I have, the housing staff and I have looked at it pretty carefully. We can't draw that conclusion yet, but it's good to see that the data didn't keep going up. That we hit, we, we hit at least, you know, we hope it's a flat area that maybe declines, but we at least started leveling off. That's the kind of thing that we will not like be able to monitor year to year and say, this year we built eight hundred units and look, the rent went down. It won't have that kind of responsiveness in this data, which is why looking at it long-term and maybe even in a speculative, you know, testing kind of mindset helps us understand those factors.
Yeah, I think my favorite thing I heard from you guys was, we have to do our part. I believe the plan really is doing our part. While I don't agree that it's going to bring prices down, I agree that it's doing its part and it is the right answer for all this. I have a, a rather sensitive question here. One of the things that the plan brings up is it recognizes that there's racial disparity in housing and all that, house ownership and all that. Is that an outcome of the current plan?
Much like housing cost, it's an outcome of some very macro social forces, but also some very long historical forces as well. Like, it's definitely not something that's emerged since twenty fourteen. It's something that's been occurring over time in our community, in Everett community for a long time. And the neighborhood plans we did in the last ten years for Plaza Vieja and South Side were really places where people and families that have been here for generations talked to staff about the impact intergenerationally of housing discrimination on them, on their cousins, on their family members who moved away. And we wanted to honor that by making sure it, it was described in a way that was data-driven in the plan. But there are, there are stories that go with those numbers. And they're not all about city policy or the city did something to cause it. But as Michelle said, the plan and policies we set can be a part of resolving some of those disparities and helping acknowledge them to move forward. For instance, the ten-year housing plan acknowledged that there are mortgage plans that are underutilized in our region. We have almost eighteen to twenty-five percent, depending on what numbers or geographic regions you looked at, of Native Americans. And yet they're the lowest homeownership numbers, but there are specialized mortgage programs that could be provide, that could provide housing opportunities that maybe we weren't utilizing before. So just continuing on a path where we're examining our policies or, or is, are they really bringing, helping everyone? Are they, you know, helping people who, city really talks about this a lot, like, are you helping people who are already ready to help themselves? Or people who need the help?
I just want to add some things, you asked if it's the, the plan that is causing it. And I would say, no, I think it's our zoning code. I think there's a lot of things, there's a lot of historical decision-making, but I think there are a lot of things in our code that favor things that reduce density, that favor things like larger lots, larger houses. And so what I think the code, the plan gets you, we also have challenges that in our most vulnerable neighborhoods, South Side, Sunny Side, you have zoning code that is the most permissive and the, the easiest to redevelop by right. And so a big part of what we're doing with the land availability suitability and code analysis project is looking at and what we're kind of calling is equalizing the other zoning districts. So it's as easy to develop density in those districts so that that concentration just isn't in those neighborhoods. And then also by the plan, really talking about affordability in our neighborhoods and connectivity and smaller lots and, you know, kind of getting to right sizing our code. I would say our planning, plan is moving in the right direction of trying to make up for some of those things that have been historically an issue with intentionally. And I would say also unintentionally, a lot of this is just the practice that you've seen across every city across the United States. And I think it was just, this is just good planning. And then we've had different challenges, different forces that have, that have changed things and they're no longer good practices. So I think this plan actually gets to setting that, the policies for making those code changes that start to relieve some of those housing pressures.
So I, I think those are all good answers and a good background about how we got here and why we're here. I think my caution, and, and I'm not sure of any specific language in here that I would criticize, but my caution would be, don't use race-based solutions to solve race problems. And be very careful with using language like you just used to say, we're going to try to make things equitable based upon economics and not based upon race or things like that. So I guess I would give my caution, just be careful that that doesn't enter in there so we don't have problems down the road. You want to take the mic or? I mean, employment districts, I, I'm really curious how those are going to work out. I think they're kind of clever. But I did find myself thinking that it smelled a lot like the hospital expansion. And that we were having, if I read it right, it was proposing employment districts based upon a specific employer or an industry bringing in houses around it. And that's a lot like what we saw at the hospital expansion that ended up being just this big train wreck for the city. And I'm just curious if, if anybody else recognizes that? And if maybe that might be something that if something like that came through, that it would be opposed again, but.
Sorry. So Commissioner Sharp, the current regional plan has some mostly similar employment areas in it, which does not allow any housing in those blue areas. Because of the housing emergency, staff was encouraged, not just because of a particular case, to look at what, that those areas maybe shouldn't be off-limits for housing, but they might have really limited housing or housing of a particular character. And the reason for that is we don't want, we appear limited, we talk about land limitations, we have limited industrial land. The last cap was really about housing. We probably need some future study on our industrial land availability. But if we set the region out of industrial land, then you start losing things like concrete plants and lumber yards and freight locations, which can increase the transportation costs of all construction and all goods and services in the community. So part of the healthy economy is having enough of these industrial lands. Part of the challenge is some of those employers are having a hard time opening or maintaining businesses because they can't house their workforce here. So that is where the idea of having workforce housing in, that's tied to an employer in the industrial zone. Because we did not want to open it up for everyone to go buy an industrial property and expect to build an apartment on it. Because we would, the demand for housing is so great, it would quickly overwhelm those blue areas on the map. But we did not want to have as hard an exclusion as the current plan has because of the housing emergency. So it's just an attempt to kind of find a balance there.
So is there a differentiation between workforce housing in that area and just general housing? Because going back to the hospital, it was not workforce housing that they were proposing. It was general housing for the public. So is there a differentiation between those two?
Yes, Chairman Dino. It's defined in the philosophy, we think three definitions for housing. And workforce housing is defined as, and it says, in this regional plan. There are a lot of definitions for workforce housing. So if it's defined differently for some other context, great. But in this regional plan, workforce housing refers to housing that is made available in connection with an employer for its employees. A good example is that the Unified School District and the Forest Service have both been looking at employee housing for their employees. Not uncommon for the Forest Service to have employee housing. They have it down in Happy Jack, they have it down in Blue Ridge. They don't have any floods now, even though they have more employees here and they have no, and they have more housing difficulties here in the Flagstaff Ranger District area. So that's a great example of like, if they wanted to take their property or property near their main office and how then develop for housing that would be tied to your employment with the Forest Service, that is workforce housing. It gets managed in a lot of different ways. It's not always truly workforce housing. It might be this apartment developer is building this apartment on my property and they are reserving thirty percent of the units for my workforce. Those will be calls that we will have to probably make one piece before us. It's like, is it enough? The plan will always answer the isn't enough questions. That's really what the commission and council will be doing in future case consideration.
So what you described originally was, let's say, the school district has an empty school. They have an empty building. They decide to retrofit that building into an apartment building that would house workforce. They could, you know, that's something, or they could have somebody come in and build something on that property where, say, thirty percent would be workforce housing and the rest could be general housing.
Correct, right. Well, I think the latter example would be one where staff might bring it to you and say, do you agree this is workforce housing? Like, and why do we think it's workforce housing and needs this definition? The plan doesn't like set a hard percentage because it's not code.
I want flexibility.
I think we want the flexibility to have, be open in those negotiations. Those kinds of negotiations always will go to council. You know, will always end up in front of the commission because the underlying zoning in these employment areas doesn't allow any of that by right. So we'll have to come forward either as a new tax amendment that allows something that is a certain percentage or a particular case that rezones a property in that blue area to allow first some housing with restrictions that would have to be set by a development agreement. That's kind of how I would imagine it works. And probably in five years, we'll have a different way we could imagine it works. I mean, that's part of the flexibility of the plan. But, but yes, we've kind of mentally gained that a little bit further and tried to think about like, what could it look like? And there are property owners who have industrial properties who started some of those conversations with us and wanted to understand this part of the plan in particular. So it's a good one to bring up and ask questions about.
Thank you.
So yeah, just two more questions for tonight, and they're mostly related to water resources. So hopefully you can answer them, if not, we can kick them down the road. The first Yeah, that's fine. The first one is, so the sea aquifer is a shared resource. How do our, how does Flagstaff, our growth avoid conflicts with neighboring communities if they're sharing? So it's something for us to consider. The big one that I really am frustrated with, and I don't know how to handle this one, is so I understand that Arizona state law requires hundred-year shared water for houses, but not for apartment complexes. Single lots don't have to have that rule. So an apartment complex, if I understand it correctly, doesn't have that same requirement.
That's not correct. Yeah, that's, that's not a correct understanding.
Okay, good.
So, so first of all, the city Flagstaff is not in attainment area. We are not required to have the Arizona Department of Water Resources under your water supply. So let's do question two, and then I'll, question one, we might. To have the Arizona Department of Water Resources under your water spot. So let's do question two, and then I'll, question one we might. As we and Aaron answer at the next meeting. But question two is, is, you know, that this this water supply designation includes all projected growth over a hundred years. So it is, it is single-family homes, it is apartments.
Okay.
It, what, what Erin Young in Water Services does is she has a. Database based on our current use, um, profile for different kinds of housing. She knows how much the average one apartment uses. I don't know how detailed. I'd have, you have to let her answer that. Versus a single-family home on a large that. And when she makes her projection of water consumption, she's not assuming. Like an average use per household, she is differentiating the kinds of households. So when we look at the preferred scenario, for instance, it really performs well. When we have more apartments for water conservation, because they don't have yards, they don't have gardens, they don't have irrigation. They tend to have fewer bathrooms. So for those reasons, they tend to have a less of a per capita water use. And the data setup for the people who don't believe that, like who live in a single-family home and. Maybe you don't want to believe I'm not doing my best for water conservation, but it's still just facts. Um, and so that is used along with the population and housing projections. For the ADWRs. And there's no, there there's differentiation from the standpoint of making. Good educated guesses on how population translates to consumption. But it does not mean that one has a requirement and one does not. And so the other question, because um, Big Williams, who's our Water Services Director, had to leave, I would, I will show him this little clip. And then get him and Aaron to be prepared at the next meeting.
Any other questions or comments?
We have about thirty minutes if you want to pull up the holding space or talk through anything in the holding space. If you think there's little ones you like, think we could just check off and move. I encourage, I encourage you to use your time, because the time you use now could make your meeting, next meeting shorter.
I'm not sure, like, if everybody's like read through all the letters, you know, like the open space letter or the. Or the FQ letter, things like that. Um, if we're ready to talk about.
Well, they're, they're all, I'd encourage, can you guys share the screen? Let's get the screen up. And then maybe, I think the visual will help you decide how you. Yeah, I think it would just be good to navigate it too for thirty minutes.
Like the visual of the holding space.
Yes.
Chart. Okay, that would be helpful.
Somebody's getting it up. We gotta wait, kill a little time. Going up now. Okay. So currently, here's what the holding space looks like. Um. So for instance. Uh, the first thing in the holding space is the new administrative changes category that staff recommended. This didn't come from a public comment. It was part of your staff report. Do you want to talk about that one at all? We might be able to check that one off. Do you like the wording of this? Do you, I know this may be, Commissioner Norton, this was one of your concerns. It's like, well, what are we gonna do if stuff changes? Because we now in a election. So let me, let me read it. The way it's written is changes that we would add an administrative changes category to page two dash eight. That states changes to the future growth illustration that match the plan amendments. And specific plans to the Flagstaff Regional Plan twenty thirty, so our current plan. With effective dates after the adoption of the Flagstaff Regional Plan twenty forty-five currently scheduled. For October twen- October ninth. So if, between October ninth and the ratification, council adopts. Plan amendments to the twenty thirty plan. That staff could just administratively update the twenty forty-five plan after it's ratified, because we'd have a council decision. That backs that up. Wouldn't be willy-nilly. And it would be one of those ones that obviously has a very short shelf life. But I thought it was a good, it came from a conversation we had with Friends of Flagstaff's Future, which was concerned people would. That we would get out of sync, essentially, as you stated earlier, and that this would be one way we could make sure. What do you think of this wording? Happy to reword it.
Uh, no, I'm all about like whatever we can do to make it document and. The most up-to-date version possible at that starting point. So if this is what helps implement that, I I'm in favor of.
So functionally, do we vote on each one of these, or how do we do this?
Well, I think that you, to to have Elsa, who's the EE up there, put the word yes under add to conditions. I think you would. I don't know if you have to make a motion, but I think you would at least say like, there is a majority of the commission in favor of this. At least for this first round. We could do a thumbs. It would, it's not, nothing's a formal vote until you make your final motion.
So.
Brush up on the manual between now and the next meeting too, because you might be mending motions now.
A thumbs up or some.
We could do the thumbs up tonight.
Thumbs up tonight.
I see one, two, three, four, five. CJ? You still on?
Yes, thumbs up.
Okay, so that one's a yes. We'll move that one. We'll count that as one of your conditions of approval. So the next one, and we don't have to take these in order. You can say skip if you want, but the next one is to revise category three. On the major plan amendments ta- list on page two dash seven, and we can pull up that page if you need us to. To take off the end that says expand the services. This one I would recommend, we wait until Lee is here. Because I think you'll have Lee questions. So maybe we just hold this one.
Okay, thank you.
Let's hold this one maybe for the twenty-fourth. But what's the next one? Keep going. Like, this is how I imagine us doing is, we're just gonna keep. So you just completed the list, let's keep working down the list.
So number, the second one is hold. Is that right?
Yeah, we'll just put, can you put a note, Elsa, in the? Um, yeah, in the last column, just say hold for the twenty-fourth. The next one is under public facilities infrastructure, revise the first guideline, and this is on page four fourteen, which is. All guidelines for all land use categories. Um, so that it applies to any proposal that requires a development application, whether it's a new development for. Or for an existing development requiring drinking water. And they must be located within the urban growth boundary. You may also want to hold this one, because it's really about the urban growth boundary again.
Right, and water. So we'll hold that for going twenty-four. And then the next. To revise the first bullet to. Where is it already served by existing infrastructure? And public facilities while minimizing and mitigating displacement? And that. Sarah, do you have anything that can help this?
Yeah, I can read you what it says right now. Um, it says, this is the first bullet under the public facilities and infrastructure.
It's adding while minimizing and mitigating displacement.
Yeah, that doesn't seem like it's right. Oh, no, I think this is the first one under all neighborhoods. Is that correct? Okay, are those page numbers four fourteen? Four fourteen is a page number. So. Is in all categories. Okay, it's the first bullet under all categories. So that one currently reads. Encourage infill development and redevelopment in areas already served by existing infrastructure and public facilities, period. So they are proposing to add while minimizing and mitigating displacement to this, to this guideline. So let me read it again. Encourage infill development and redevelopment in areas already served by existing infrastructure and public facilities. And the question is, is the last five words, should they be added or not? Is this one worth trying to talk about?
I think so, but.
Okay, so, okay, I'm sorry. I'll hand it on, now I'm where you're at.
So elsewhere in the document, where where would it's, where would it have T mean to minimize and mitigate displacement? Is that handled elsewhere?
It is currently written in policy HA dot one, which means it only would be considered where there's a plan amendment. Under the current, you know, which of course is up to your and council's discretion to revise right now. Or recommend or issues.
Did you have something? No, well, no. Um, so basically it's just adding in the end mitigating displacement. I have a good favor of that. Addition of those words. I'm just wondering if it has to be more defined. Is that defined enough? Minimizing and mitigating displacement?
I don't know if um Alex or Michelle wants to take a crack at that. They're thinking about it. I mean, can we come back to that? I think we need time to think about that, because that's.
I mean, what's the implementation? Right, so that that'd be, you know, it sounds good.
How do you achieve it? So so maybe on the note on this one is, we'll develop a staff recommendation. We'll look into it over the next two weeks, and staff will come back with a recommendation on this one. And maybe the next one, because I think the next one is also related. We'll just say like staff recommendation needed or something.
And I think on that one, I understand the spirit of what they're doing, but the term minimizing, that's a measurable item. And so how do you actually define that? I minimized, I made it as minimal as possible. And then how then is mitigation defined? Are we paying? Writing checks? Or is the rest of the city doing this? So I think there could be unintended consequences. That's good attention here.
Yeah, it's certainly, we did not find it problematic necessarily to say that as a policy, but as a guideline. That could be, it could be challenging. And I don't know if Michelle wants to jump in here too.
I do, and I'm I'm looking at Ted Michaelson, because this is a conversation we have. At nauseam as we're doing our coding project, and it's actually a, a key part of what we're trying to incorporate into that of. Actually getting some expertise of how do we write code that does, does these things? Um, and I mean, and then there's the question, just another thing to add to the complexity of why. This is a hard guideline is because is it displacement if you have subpar housing? That you are replacing with a different type of housing. Um, and maybe. Um, it's a dilapidate, you know, a falling apart apartment building and it's being replaced with. A new apartment building. Are we displacing someone? Because now they can't afford that. And is that the right thing? Because. Is that really the conditions we want our community to live in? So it is something that we at, really, really struggle with. And that's why I just wanted to explain when we need more time to think through that, because it is something we've been struggling with as well.
Thank you. I think that we can put that on hold.
And also, will you copy that to the five eighteen one two? Those are two related.
Okay.
I I did have one comment about that, the CJ. I I just think what what um the staff member said is absolutely correct. I I'm thinking about Sunnyside in particular that. We have very high density in the area that has a lot of um dilapidated buildings. And if those are all. Redeveloped, what are gonna happen, what's gonna happen to all the people there if they can't afford to live there?
Okay, so we'll look at staff recommendations for that.
Yes.
And then we're looking at item number, I think it's item number six.
Yeah, item number six is another one I think we should hold until Lee is available, because it's primarily about reclaimed water and irrigation. And I think. There's been a whole reclaimed water study. They know, he and Aaron would know all the different circumstances, and I think. That would be a good one to hold for water service availability.
Okay, thank you. And then number seven, add new guideline under design and other considerations, activation of street fronts is desired. Blank or inactive. Walls are discouraged and not.
Well, this current, there, this is under urban center. And the current guidelines for urban center under design and other considerations are. Provide direct accessibility to ground floor businesses and community services for pedestrians from a public space. So it's very specific. It says, um, then it says allow for residential mixed-use building facing arterials to be set back. For larger pedestrian zones and reduce noise for residents. So don't be flexible about building forward. Encourage multi-story mixed-use buildings to have windows and doors facing sidewalks. And give preference to adaptive reuse of buildings and development of vacant and underutilized parcels over demolishing historic buildings and landmarks. So those are the four design and other consideration guidelines. They are suggesting that activation of the street. Front is desired and blank and inactive walls are discouraged. Um, it it it's. Uh, I think that is, I don't know how, I'd look to maybe Alex, who's our architect on staff. Um, on whether that is something that's complimentary to what we already have, or is adding something additional. Would you come speak to that?
Alexandra Trellie, for Planning the Absarath the City. Um, I would say that. This statement is in line with some of the requirements we have of the zoning code now. And certainly in line with the philosophies behind transect zoning and building type and street activation. Um, so I could see this working in two different ways that either it become. It becomes something that you can apply to a discretionary case specifically. Or you're looking at possible future code amendments and that this guideline would support. Certain architectural design standards.
Any questions, discussion? A thumbs up or thumbs down? I'm a neutral.
Thumbs up.
I see, I see.
Mostly thumbs up. I'm a neutral.
Yeah, I see. Or I think, Megan, are you neutral? I can't tell what Megan's doing. Okay, so I saw three neutrals and three thumbs up. So maybe. We say, I don't, I don't want to put yes or no here, but maybe we just record that and say, three neutral at this time and three. Um, positive feelings about it. And then, of course, um, well, Christine will be here on the twenty-fourth. And that'll give her a good note to know she might be a tiebreaker. Whether to move it forward or not. Staff didn't have any, I can't think of any reason. This doesn't fit either Alex, so I'd go with Alex's. It's it's pretty in line with our current. Laws be in the zoning code.
Okay, and then on, so we'll mark that as that on policy map four dash nine. Add a gateway designation for Fourth Street and Route sixty-six.
So the gateways map, which is, um. Um, yeah, let me give you a page number for policy map four dash nine for a second. For those who are navigating. Um, four dash nine is on page four dash. Hold on, I'm almost there. Four dash forty-one. That's where it is. It is. The current map and current plan does not identify any gateways interior to the city. But the map in the proposed plan identifies gateways interior to the city at the corner of Butler Avenue and Milton. And at Route sixty-six and the new Lone Tree Overpass. If you wanted to add one to Fourth Street. What that would mean is thinking about enhanced design and entryway features at that intersection, which it has some of that now.
You know, there was supposed to be some emphasis on that that corridor right there, because it's the. Geographic center of the city. And yes, there is improvement, you know, like children's class and. And how that was handled and built. I think it would. Be especially since there's so much development going on. In the Fourth Street corner right there in town. I think it would be advantageous to identify it as a gateway. To encourage that kind of architectural design, um, and furthering that.
Sheriff Luke has our hand up, so you know.
CJ?
I just absolutely second what Commissioner Norton said.
Does anybody else have?
So what are the, my question is always when we're talking about things like this, what are the. Broader implications, right? And like it's, it's great if some of these things happen organically and what have you. But if we're designating these things, does it compel some of the private landowners? To do things that perhaps they would rather not do?
With our current plan, some examples of a private property owners have done on great streets, which sixty-six is already listed as a great street. Is like not put up chain link fencing or improving the appearance of the fencing and the entryways along the road. Timber Sky is a good example of that. Part of their design that they proposed in their zoning map amendment was really looking at that great street frontage. And making sure it had enhanced design features. It's also been used in working with Arizona Department of Transportation for enhanced design in the public right of way. So, and that's really one of the big reasons we kept it. It was discussed like how useful were great streets? Did we really accomplish gateways? Are they in the right places? We had those conversations, but the middle road plan and the US one eighty plan. Both considered great, the great street designation and the gateway designations in our current regional plan and why they. Recommended improved crossings and pedestrian designs. We felt it was important to identify those key places. And it's a big intersection right over here at Fourth and sixty-six. It takes almost three minutes to time through it. So.
Two minutes?
No, no. You know, Alex has something to contribute here. I'll come bring you the.
I was gonna, I can answer this one. We can pass this one.
I'll meet you halfway. I just want to add that my understanding of designating something as a gateway would really, once again, that would. Be lead to a discretionary case. Where you were looking to rezone and then we would look for those sort of enhanced design considerations. So if you're concerned about existing entitlements that current property owners have. I don't believe that this would necessarily change any of that. It just might affect future development if not under existing entitlement.
So follow up on that. Why is it not already designated as a gateway?
No one proposed it, no.
So how do commissioners feel about that thumbs up? Thumbs up. I think we heard CJ.
See, yeah, CJ was a thumbs up. I see six thumbs up. So we'll put that as a yes and decide it today.
Yes, thumbs up.
Look, we have fifteen more minutes. We're making good progress. Keep going.
We're on to number nine, which is in four fourteen, revise first guideline to. Areas already served by existing and future infrastructure and public facilities. So he can read that whole.
Right, so we didn't put the heading, so it's the first bullet under which heading?
Oh, so this is a different. Let's say this is a different tail. The same thing. So the first guideline again says encourage infill development and redevelopment in areas already served by existing infrastructure and public facilities. And it just says revise it. What is the? Can you have a question?
And future. Well, and future.
So this is adding and future. I believe you, I, these were both proposed in the letter from F cubed and I believe you could combine both revisions. But I listed them separately here because they're. Proposed separately for different reasons.
So originally it said areas already served by existing infrastructures and public facilities. And this is saying to please add future. Infrastructures and I mean it's by existing and future. Uh oh, now where did you?
And the commenter here is still here. And I would have a question as staff for them. I guess the definition of infill and redevelopment and it's that it's occurring in an existing developed area, so. I think does future infrastructure mean? Like upgrading existing infrastructure or like new sewer lines and existing neighbor, like.
I guess I'd like to hear more about what the future they were thinking of when they wrote the comment is because it's. It seems in Congress without.
And maybe we can think of a better word because future and infill is not always.
Doesn't really go together for planners.
But that doesn't mean we can't think of a better.
We're only seeing part of it still now.
Yeah.
Pull back up, it's, this is the same sentence to revise. Think about it all in context.
Yeah.
Adding that to the end and then. And future to the middle.
Yeah, so Lauren didn't have the mic, was saying that we didn't pass it fast enough is that remember this is, there's two edits proposed to the same line. But I don't know, could we ask Michelle James to come up and answer?
Sure.
You feel ready to do that?
Sorry, my explanation in my written comments was not clear, but I was using an example of public transit. So if you have some infill in an area, it's what I was thinking about with things like Murrow Springs. Before Mountain Line decided to go west, further west on Route sixty-six. Knew they were planning on it because it was in the five year plan, right? And they just needed the money to do it. And so infill in that area might be appropriate because you knew there was coming infrastructure that you wanted. Does that make sense? Also, there's sometimes there's things going on, the city is building extensions for water lines, et cetera. You know it's coming, you know, it's two years down the road. Maybe infill in that area close to that, I mean, it has to have water anyway. But someplace close to that would be appropriate. So it just opens things up a little bit. I, what I tried to say in my comments was using the word near future. I think when I talked to, I talked to you Sarah, we were just talking about future, but in the near future. So something that's coming soon and you know it's on the books already. Maybe that could be included.
But then that only occurs in the next couple of years and the plan is for fifteen years down the road.
Right, sure.
I think staff has a.
Yeah, okay, I have a comment to that.
Yeah, Alex, so Alex and Michelle were, were flagging the, the word that we've used to describe something similar. To what Friends of Flagstaff's future said in their comment elsewhere in the plan is. Is the word planned trails or planned services. What that means to staff is it's in a capital improvement plan or it's a funded thing that will be. In a capital improvement plan and then I'll let Michelle expand on that. So maybe it's existing and planned infrastructure and public facilities might be. Need for these, you know.
Yeah, and just to get to your point, Chairman Dino, is that if you say plan, yes, this is a ten year plan. But we update the capital improvement plan every three to five years. So it's, as it's getting planned, we're kind of moving out with the future. So it kind of covers all that.
So maybe, and, and Michelle James behind me nodded and said, yes, that would be her need. So we could, we could alter that proposed revision to existing and planned infrastructure and public facilities. And would the, would the commission support that?
I, I think that would be something I would support rather than just future. How, how do other commissioners feel? Thumbs up?
Thumbs up.
Thank you.
I see all thumbs up. Great.
Yeah.
Put a yes next. All right. The next one is tied to the future growth illustration. I'll just do a time check. We have ten minutes. So if you feel like it's too big to talk about, we can put a pin in it. This is expanding the urban center along both sides of Milton South to Forest Meadows. It currently, that designation, if you go to the page that the. The future growth illustration is on, and we might need to pull it up on the screen. Do you have it open or do I need to switch and share my screen? Four dash ten is the page number. But if you look at Milton Road.
Do you want the web?
Yeah, the web.
The, there was, all of the Woodlands Village area was suburban center in the sixty day public review. Friends of Flagstaff's future recommended that some more of the area be designated as an urban center. Which we were agreeable to, we staff looked at it and recommended that that go down to University Avenue. But did not extended further south. And so this proposal would be to take that purple area that Lauren's getting on the screen for us now. And I'm killing all the time I can to get her there. We'd go all the way south to Forest Meadows, which is the next east-west line. Down, so Macau, so when you see that area, there's a couple of east-west roads, there's university and we stopped at Old University. But bringing it all the way down to Forest Meadows would include like the coals and the porch and the apartments there. At Woodlands Village and the Hilton, like taking that whole area and saying as that redevelops, it should be becoming more urban and less suburban. One of the reasons we didn't take it down that far is those are pretty big blocks. They're way bigger than what we would consider an urban block and they were identified. In the high occupancy housing plan as suburban centers. Where the block north of there, it needs some road connections, but could be closer to an urban grid. That was just staff's like rationale. But open to your thoughts on that. I don't think that's a place we, we would stand very firm if you felt strongly that it should be urban. I'll tell you, the high occupancy housing plan readiness area, this area was ranked very high still. So it does have, it lacks the road network of an urban area, but it does have underlying infrastructure. It's just the road network. It's not as dense. So it would be a medium in our minds, I guess.
Any thoughts from commissioners? So there are, there were two things that you said, you recommended taking it down to university instead of all the way down to.
Forest Meadows.
Forest Meadows, thank you. I couldn't remember the name. And I would be supportive in that to do to university. I don't know about others.
You mean, sorry, can you restate what you'd be supportive of?
Making that urban all the way down to university, is that already urban?
Yeah, that's the area that's already, do you mean Forest Meadows?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, yeah, thanks. Keep zooming.
All the way down to Forest Meadows? And then where would that, that would just be the stopping line? Would Forest Meadows be all the way up back to university and then stop? Or would it be all the way up to Route sixty-six on the west side of?
I mean, the area between.
Currently Old University and it would stay purple. It would be extending that purple. So now Forest Meadows, which is north of Walmart. To, and north of the. The, what's that one called? That big Fremont Station, north of Fremont Station. That would all be considered urban as areas are redeveloping. I mean, it's all built out right now, but.
The, the question I guess I'm asking is to the west side because Forest Meadows goes.
Just of Woodlands Village or?
Two Woodlands.
Just two Woodlands Village. I don't know. That's a good question.
I, I was thinking. Yeah, because Forest Meadows goes around, so I guess we would have to define that as Woodlands Village. And then if you can go up a little bit, does that go all the way to Route sixty-six?
The purple on the. East side of Woodlands Village does go all the way to Route sixty-six.
Okay, okay, thank you. So it would be this. This, oh, now go back to being big. I'm sorry. So Forest Meadows and the dividing line would be Interstate seventeen.
There, that's, so Milton is on, I think, yeah, it would be NAU campus to Woodlands Village, I think. Unless, and that, Michelle James, the commenter nodded, that what they intended was all the purple. That's on the.
East side of the road, all that area that's like brownish would turn purple and then.
Okay. And then Forest Meadows and Woodlands Village, that whole big block would be purple.
Yeah, okay, then I, I can visualize that. Thank you.
So being in this area is all developed out, what would this encourage for the future by putting it up to urban center?
It would do a couple of things. It would encourage that we start.
If properties start to come in and say, I'm going to develop, I'm going to demo coals. And I'm going to build something else here. That we would say, well, we would start looking at this block for like, how can we get more road connections through it? Because it's not got a gridded urban scale network.
When we start looking to acquiring railways, probably couldn't just blast the road through this. Took us twenty years to do it the first time, so.
It would probably start a slow process of trying to increase the grid in this area.
It would also create a lot of density and intensity in the redevelopment of any of these parcels. I've been guessing which ones.
Yeah.
And we have about four minutes left.
And would that, think about it, what would that do with the view shed?
The view shed from where?
From that area that we're talking about. You know, you're coming into town, you have a view shed. I think a lot of Flagstaff citizens back when Walmart was built and when.
All Garden and those places were built, a hotel that's up there, they were worried about the view shed.
I think the view shed's already maximally impacted by Fremont Station and the courtyards. I'm not sure that anything you did north of there would impact the view shed very much. I think it's already, the foreground is already covered, so this would be background to like views from the interstate or views from the entrance to Milton.
That's, yeah, that's what I was asking because that was a citizen concern for years and years. And I don't know if this would impact it more.
We did discuss the view shed along Milton when we were considering a Milltown development. It's part of why they built smaller buildings in the front, put the bigger building on the backside is because they didn't want to block the kind of big peak speed that people get on Milton.
And that's something that developers could work with the city on.
Sure.
So do we want to do a thumbs up, thumbs down? One more CJ, sorry.
I was just going to say thumbs up. I, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, everybody else?
Okay, well, I think that's the last one we'll have time for tonight, but I think this was a good calm practice. To get us started and now when we're, we meet on the twenty-fourth after we take public comment, I think everybody will be ready to go.
Okay, so next on the agenda is miscellaneous, miscellaneous items to inform commissioners. Any miscellaneous items? Hearing.
Or we close it out, who has, Sarah?
To, you know, the earlier discussion we had when I, when I put some of these things in the holding space, particularly, you know, the adaptive and living facility and all of. All of those comments and letters. Are you, you still want? To say these are the things I want in the holding space specifically?
When you look at this, and may I make a suggestion? When you look Commissioner Norton at this, the letter from the actual commission, all of those things are covered in the response to comments.
So you can go look up, they have this comment.
Okay.
Here's why. And if you'd like access to the Excel versions that you can sort or hunt easier, we'd be happy to provide that.
And I, correct me if I'm wrong. Russell Randall's or Lisa's letter seems to filter out what has already been addressed.
It does.
Do you agree with that?
I would agree he's filtered out, yes, things already addressed, but he, um, but his comments are for a different group.
Yes.
Even though, yeah, yeah.
Right.
So.
Okay.
But yes, which of those do you think have merit to admit or do you want to see a staff recommendation on? Like staff can look at those and see if there's some we recommend.
I don't think it should just be me doing that, so yes, that'd be great. All right.
There, sorry, I just wanted to make one note on Russ's comments. There is, there is one section that is, I think, a duplicate comment from the um. The previous letter from the commission, which has to do with the. Illustrations in chapter four and some things that were, uh, he suggested for the key. Um, so. We did include some of those edits to the key that were previously suggested during the sixty-day review.
Okay, is there any other, are there any items to and from commissioners? See CJ doesn't have anything, so we are adjourned. It is seven thirty-one.
Late.